Do the pledge of allegiance.
Either or.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call.
Here.
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 All right.
Let's do some recognition.
You want me to read this?
You want to give out the certificates?
Oh, we have certificates? Awesome. Who wants to be the...
No shaking hands.
Oh, we don't shake hands. No handshaking. Ready? The purpose or goal of the COVID-19 Transition Committee is to collaborate to create a plan that will provide a safe and effective learning environment for the students and staff during the COVID-19 pandemic. The committee is comprised of administration, teachers, parents, and students. We would like to express our deepest appreciation to the members of this committee. Dr. Kevin Skinkis, Dr. Hector Freitas, Lilly Adelsick.
Hold on, let me pass them out. Hector Freitas, Lilly Adelsick.
Can I hear? I don't think the mics are on.
Are the mics... Can you guys hear that?
I'm loud, but I don't even think...
Barely. Mr. Prok's here today?
Like, that's not on. Ms. Beth Augustine?
Okay.
Kevin Baldus?
Back that way.
Right behind you. Dan Bonarigo?
You.
Michael?
Sheshevsky.
Sheshevsky?
Yeah.
Did I say it... Seriously, did I say it right?
No.
No. Sheshevsky.
Yeah.
Gotcha. I'm Polish. I should be better. Mike Connors? Brendan Curtin? Anne Marie Dixon? Right there. Mark Helgason?
Is Mark here? No.
Kristy Hughes?
He's not here.
Julie Lobby? Ms. Lindquist?
She's ran something to get something.
Mr. Mannen?
He's outside.
Tricia McVicker?
Right.
Mike Murphy?
Unable to be here tonight, I think.
Lindsey Maynor, Ms. Maynor? Jenna Osborne? Aubrey Prince? Doug Schultz? And Kristen Smith... Dr. Smithana? And that concludes the recognition for this evening. Thank you, everyone, for your time on the committee, because I know it was, you know, a lot of time, and we appreciate it.
And tremendously important. Okay, at this point, we're gonna...
So the board... Just so the boards are aware, Mr. Prok said all those microphones, because of the large space, are for the microphones for the TV broadcasts, so that we can pick up everybody on the TV broadcast. That would generate too much feedback, so you're gonna need to use your teacher voice today when we're having discussion...
Not a problem.
...or answering questions.
At this point, we're gonna do visitor statements. I'm gonna read the statement here. "The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the Board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent." We did have such a request from Dr. Keane.
Dr. John Keane here. Can we check and see if Dr. Keane's next door in the...
Overflow?
Overflow room.
Yeah, I just saw him. He's definitely here.
He's going first?
Yeah, I'll let him go first.
Good evening, Dr. Keane.
Dr. Skinkis, the Board.
Are you gonna be the timekeeper?
I've got two topics, so I requested some extra time. I'll start with my first topic, and it regards to class rank proposal that I read about in the paper. So, before change... I'm John Keane. I live in Brookfield. Should've been on the Board eight years. So before changing a Board policy or tradition, it is worth considering why the policy was instituted in the first place. I would like to offer you my perspective as a former Board member, parent of six RB students, and as a former student with multiple siblings that went to RB. Class rank has been a fixture here at RB for at least half a century. One useful purpose it serves is as a measuring stick for both students and parents. The class rank, along with standardized testing, provides valuable additional perspective to parents on how their child is performing as they journey through RB. During my lifetime, RB has been known as a school that encourages, through its culture, academic growth and achievement. Over the last decade, I have attended multiple senior academic award nights, and this recognition is appropriate and acts as a powerful motivator. Class rank provides an opportunity to give special recognition to our top, very top students at graduation through the top 10, as well as the top 10 percent. These students have worked extremely hard, given our rig of this curriculum, and many go on to future academic and professional success that basically started here at the school, as it did with me. This effort to achieve this award is only through their own choice, and I believe the RB community should continue to offer and celebrate this achievement. In my eight years I attended multiple graduation ceremonies, I noticed the majority of our top 10 students are female. Does this matter? In my opinion, not if these students are viewed as individuals using an objective measure on a level playing field. I do not believe our faculty somehow discriminates against male students. Multiple variables influence academic success, but the most important and the one we can encourage is effort. Another objection to class rank is that students will game the system. However, the only way to increase class rank is through taking more challenging classes. Why would we want to discourage our very top students from challenging themselves by taking more AP classes? RB is supposed to prepare our students to succeed in life and contribute to our society. Competition is a part of life, through college admission, to graduate and professional school, as well as employment. Rankings are inherent in any job interview or promotion. As one walks the halls of RB, the athletic wall of fame stands out. The chances of any varsity athlete earning this recognition is low. However, an incoming freshman athlete will at least be motivated to try, and trying is a first step in success in utilizing and developing the talents God has given us. The academic wall of fame is the RB tradition of top 10 and the top 10 percent printed in each graduation booklet. We want our students to aim high and give a solid effort. These habits will ensure success at RB and once they leave RB. When we recognize academic success, we give more of it. Perhaps there are additional ways the Board can encourage academic success. For instance, by measuring and recognizing academic growth and achievement or improvement. For example, PSAT performance versus performance on entrance exams. In summary, I believe that eliminating the top 10 and top 10 percent may send the wrong message to RB students, parents, and the community. I ask that the Board find a way to preserve these traditions. Hopefully, I can move on to the next one, Kevin?
You have about 5 minutes and 49 seconds.
Already?
Yeah, you have left. Five minutes.
Oh, okay. So, I just want to address the COVID-19 solution that we've proposed here at RB. I'd like the community... If you go to the RB website, there's a link to the CDC, and there's a statement on the importance of reopening schools this fall. Now, we don't know why, but children are at lower risk of contracting COVID-19 than adults, possibly due to differences in cell receptors. Children under 18 account for only... Under 7 percent of all cases and less than 0.1 percent of all COVID deaths. COVID-19 mortality in children is less than in the influenza virus. Three separate international studies have shown that children are not the primary source of COVID-19 transmission in schools or the community. On the other hand, patients aged 65 and over have accounted for over 80 percent of COVID-related deaths. We should do our best to protect our older population and those with chronic health conditions. The Board should certainly accommodate higher-risk teachers and employees. A recent article in the New England Journal of Medicine advocated for the full reopening of primary schools, given the importance of school instruction and the relatively low risk in children. There are definitely harms to keeping children out of school, and it may take years for us to fully understand those harms. Another fact to keep in mind is that there are 5 million U.S. confirmed cases of COVID-19, but antibody testing is published in JAMA July 21st that the number is closer to 50 million, maybe 100 million Americans have already contacted the virus, since many cases have little or no symptoms. The good news is that the two-case fatality rate is only 10 percent of the confirmed case rate, more in line with the flu virus. Unfortunately, this virus is here to stay. If we do not develop an effective vaccine, will we depend on enough people being exposed until the virus burns itself out? This could be another 100 million people in the United States. I hope this is not the case, but in the meantime, we need to learn to adjust and compare the harms of any course of action. There is no easy answer. I know that the Board is constrained by state mandates, but as a physician, I agree with the CDC recommendation that opening schools to at least some in-person learning, such as the hybrid model that the Board has proposed, is in the best interest of RB students, especially with the risk reduction measures that are being put in place as recommended by the CDC. I thank you, Dr. Skinkis. I thank the Board for letting me present on these two topics, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you. We just want to start by section, and then we'll give you the first three sections, and then we'll ask for across the...
And then we'll do the overflow.
All right. You want to start?
Start on my left?
Whatever section you want.
Okay. So, start... Anyone behind?
Anyone over in that far section would like to do public comment. You may come up to the microphone.
Didn't people sign in? I thought we had some people sign in, too.
Do we have a sign-in sheet?
At the table. Get the table. Yeah.
Okay, comments are limited to three minutes, so what I'll do is that when you have about 30 seconds left, I'll just put my hand up so you're aware, okay?
Yes, give me one second to get started.
Sure, take your time.
Facial recognition doesn't work anymore.
Take your time.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Jennifer Nelson, and I am the parent of two RB students this year. As doctors and educators have said, the goal should be for all students to return to safely learning in person, but setting that goal for what safely is, is what's critically important. It's not currently safe for students, families, or staff, and RB should start the year fully remote. Decisions on when and how to physically reopen school buildings for in-person instruction need to be data-driven, taking into consideration the incidence of COVID-19 in the surrounding area. Widespread failure to respond to COVID-19 on a national level has left schools in a position no better than when they originally closed in the spring. We may be worse than we were in the spring. As of this afternoon, over 5 million people across the U.S. have tested positive for the virus, and more than 160,000 of those have died. Over 380,000 total child COVID-19 cases have been reported in the U.S. Almost a quarter of those children tested positive for the virus during the last two weeks of July alone, a total of at least 97,000 children. According to a new analysis by the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Children's Hospital Association, there has been a 90 percent increase in the number of COVID-19 cases among children in the United States over the last four weeks. What does this mean in terms of the data? RB should start the year fully remote. The virus can be spread through air droplets called aerosols. These aerosols remain in the air and can accumulate over time, increasing the risk of transmission in closed indoor spaces. While the hybrid model reduces those contacts each day, full remote learning eliminates those contacts. RB should start the year fully remote. Researchers at Duke University created a test to determine which masks are the least effective. This study concluded that some masks, such as gaiters, are worse than wearing no mask at all, as the aerosols are smaller and dispersed farther. RB has not communicated which masks are suitable, nor how to properly wear them, and I have observed both students in RB camps, as well as much of our community, not wearing masks, wearing gaiters, or wearing masks on their chins. With the lack of knowledge and lack of willingness to wear masks appropriately, RB should start the year fully remote. Regardless of whether school opens in person, online, or some combination, communication between the district and families will be essential. We need information about educational plans, about COVID-related illnesses in the community, and about how to support our children's learning. We need that information quickly, and we need it in clear and accessible formats. This current plan is not safe for students, families, or staff, and RB should start the year fully remote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Julie. Or Jennifer.
Anyone else from that section?
Tell me when you're ready, Brian.
I am ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Thinking members of the School Board and District 208 and the Administration. For those of you who don't know me, I'd like to introduce myself. My name's Brian Toomey. I'm a 45-year resident of this community. I'm a proud RB graduate, class of 1986, and my children, one of whom just graduated, are third-generation bulldogs. I am currently in my third year as President of the Boosters, and prior served as Vice President and General Board Member. In the spirit of full disclosure, there are many people in this building that I consider friends and acquaintances who represent both sides of this situation. I am in no way an expert on COVID or any other virus. I have no medical background, and I like most just hear off my opinion and some thoughts that might be getting lost while the RBA jumps in at the 11th hour to thwart any plan the Board, Administration, and COVID Committee has developed. Let me start by saying thank you to those I just mentioned. I cannot imagine the hours that you all put in designing a plan to bring the kids back to school. I am sure the stress and sleepless nights have taken its toll on you all in one way or another. Your dedication, professionalism have not gone unnoticed, so on behalf of my family and those that believe in your plan, thank you. So while the RBA is promoting itself on the concern of our kids' safety and well-being, I would like to ask how they consider our children's mental health and effects of being out of school has on them. Have they considered what the abrupt end of last year did to our children of all classes, especially the seniors? Do they care? Do they understand the amount of money our children stand to lose in scholarship opportunities because they may be... They may not be equipped enough for the desire to remote teach. My daughter took an AP bio exam and scored a five. Her college allowed her to take genetics, a 200-level bio class. She is now questioning herself if she's prepared for that class based on the end... How her year ended last year, knowing that she missed some labs, as well as the course material was not fully covered, and that is no fault of the teacher. Is this how we want the class of 2021 to take off? Questioning if they have the material to move on, finding out if they are ill-prepared for college-level courses because they're being taught on a screen? If Marty Sloan, the opposing members of RBA, can stand here and tell me they have not gone to the grocery store, Home Depot, ordered meals out, vacationed, or had kids participate in sports camps this summer, and have stayed sheltered at home since March, I can understand their position. They have done everything by the book to avoid COVID. However, conversely, if you have done any of these things, then coming to school and doing the job the committee pays you to do should not be a stretch, as you are not concerned with any of those people you came in contact with at any store, restaurant, or vacation. The Board Administration COVID Committee worked tirelessly to reach out to stakeholders, the families, the staff, and the students to survey our preferences. From what was returned, from what I could tell, some sort of hybrid model was the majority. They moved forward and created a plan, maybe not perfect and not without challenges, but a plan nonetheless that we worked with. Did it address every problem scenario and individual situation? No, how could it? Is there a blueprint for returning to school during a global pandemic? If there is, it has not been shared with the world, let alone District 208. There is talk aside from RBA. This is really time for sides. You talk care concern for safety, yet you want us to pick a side, your side, so you can teach remote. Do they care that some kids who depend on school for breakfast and lunch may go without eating? Now is not the time to pick sides. Now is the time to come together for the good of the students you openly profess care so much about, to try to get them back to school. The damage being done mentally, physically, and educationally cannot be done easily. Kids are off the charts in categories parents don't even want to talk about, like drugs, suicide, depression, alcohol consumption.
I've stopped, Brian.
Just to name a few.
Please close.
I know I'm out of time, so I just want to thank you for listening to my thoughts. Again, they are just my opinions. They are not based on anything other than my own opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Good evening.
Ready?
Yeah.
It's a little loud if you can't.
Okay.
Ready? Go ahead.
My name is Nick Novak. I am a senior here at RB. To tell you a little about myself, I am the National Honor Society President. I am a two-sport athlete, and I am on the top 5 percent of the RB class rank. I would like to talk about two things: class rank and the hybrid model. I feel it is very important, as a student body, to be present at school. It is essential in learning. From my experience last year, we... Honestly, it was hard to learn at home. There's a lack of motivation. There is... It's really difficult to be on a screen for eight hours a day to try to stay focused and try to get what needs to be done. To be at school does not only mean to learn, it also means to see your friends' faces, to see your teachers' faces. It has been hard not to see some of my closest friends since I haven't been at school. School is somewhere where I can express myself and express my feelings for others as strongly as I can, and to see... To see other people is really where it should be, and it's socially distanced, of course, but just to be at school with half your class, that is extremely important to every kid at RB. For the class rank, students who are at the top, they do deserve it. I have worked extremely hard, and I put myself in this position because college... Like, I was always told as a kid, colleges take the best of the best. And since a freshman, I was told, "Take the hardest classes, do as best as you can," and I've done that, and I've done that successfully. And to... For that to be taken away my senior year, that's just not fair. Maybe if that would start for the incoming freshmen, since they don't have anything in place, I feel like that would be the best case. It's just not fair to take that away from seniors who are graduating, since they are... They've worked so hard for it. I just wanted to bring a student's perspective to the Board tonight. It's important, and honestly, just to be able to go to school is really what we need. I've been looking forward to the school year, and I was upset to hear that, to go fully Kids aren't going to be motivated to go to log in every day. They're not going to learn as much. You can take most of the kids, they're going to tell you, "Oh, it's a joke." And I know teachers do work really hard to try to do everything they can to give the students the best opportunity to learn at home, but it's not the same at school. And I feel like we should do everything we can to get kids in school.
Thank you, Nick. I need you to wrap up, okay? You got a closing statement?
Um, no.
Okay, thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Nick.
Any more on that side?
Middle section.
Middle section.
Hello.
Tell me when you're ready. Go ahead and introduce yourself first.
Hello, my name's Maria Kaplan. I have a son that's a sophomore this year, and I signed him up for the Blended Plan. One, because I did not want Apex teachers teaching my son, I wanted RB teachers teaching my son. And two, because I believe that as long as it's safe, that the kids will benefit from time in school with the teachers, with their friends, and it's more motivation. While the spring was very hard, I don't believe my son benefited from any of the classes. He's in French, but he doesn't know a lot of French right now. So I believe as long as it's safe, that I would like the children to be in school as much as possible. I understand no plan is perfect, and it's hard to come up with something, but I've seen the Blended Plan, and I'm concerned more with the instruction time, the amount of instruction time that's in that plan. I'm under no illusions, I know that sooner or later, we will be at 100 percent remote sometime, whether it be the first week, five weeks in, flu season, whenever. My concern is, where is the plan for 100 percent remote learning? Where's the instruction time? Why haven't we seen this yet? We all know that sooner or later, we've seen other schools, it's coming. So how come we haven't seen this instruction time for this remote plan? Is there one? I hope that this plan has more instruction time than the approximately 17 hours that's listed in the Blended Plan currently, because I don't believe... I'm comparing it to other schools around. Use Morton, for example. They're doing 100 percent remote, but the teachers will be in school for the full school day, and the kids will be online, getting instruction the full school day. So how is our child supposed to compare when we're only getting less than 17 hours instruction time, and a lot of the time, the kid's going to be at home on their own again? That's my big concern. While I understand that we might not be able to be in school forever, any time making the relationships with the teachers is very important, so if we can do it safely, I would like to do it safely, but I'm more concerned, again, with what happens when we're 100 percent remote. Why... What... How come we can't have as much instruction time as other districts around us? And I would really like to see that soon, since we're starting school soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria, that will be covered tonight.
Okay. Anyone else in the middle section?
Hi, everyone. My name's Tricia McVicker, and... Can I start? Okay, great. I'm Tricia McVicker, and I am the parent of a sophomore here at Riverside Brookfield High School. I had the privilege of serving on the COVID Transition Committee. Believe it or not, I volunteered. I saw an email, I know, right? I saw an email, and I responded to Dr. Skinkis and Dr. Freitas, and I told them that I wanted to help if they thought that I could add value. A lot of people didn't know me until last night, when I invited parents to come and support the hybrid model with me. I was asked what my qualifications were, and so somebody asked me...
I just, I just wanted to bring a student's perspective to the board tonight. It's important, and honestly, just to be able to go to school is really what we need. I've been looking forward to the school year, and I was upset to hear that, to go fully, fully e-learning. It's, it's, kids aren't going to be motivated to go to, to log in every day. They're not going to learn as much. You can take most of the kids, they're going to tell you, oh, it's, it's a joke. And I know teachers do work really hard to try to do everything they can to give the students the best opportunity to learn at home, but it's not the same at school. And I feel like we should do everything we can to get kids in school.
Thank you, Nick. I need you to wrap up, okay? You got a closing statement?
Um, no.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Nick.
Any more on that side?
Middle section.
Middle section.
Hello.
Tell me when you're ready. Go ahead and introduce yourself first.
Hello, my name is Maria Kaplan. I have a son that's a sophomore this year, and I signed him up for the blended plan. One, because I did not want Apex teachers teaching my son, I wanted RB teachers teaching my son. And two, because I believe that as long as it's safe, that the kids will benefit from time in school with the teachers, with their friends, and it's more motivation. While the spring was very hard, I don't believe my son benefited from any of the classes. He's in French, but he doesn't know a lot of French right now. So I believe as long as it's safe, that I would like the children to be in school as much as possible. I understand no plan is perfect, and it's hard to come up with something, but I've seen the blended plan, and I'm concerned more with the instruction time, the amount of instruction time that's in that plan. I'm under no illusions, I know that sooner or later we will be at 100% remote sometime, whether it be the first week, five weeks in, flu season, whenever. My concern is, where is the plan for 100% remote learning? Where's the instruction time? Why haven't we seen this yet? We all know that sooner or later, we've seen other schools, it's coming. So how come we haven't seen this instruction time for this remote plan? Is there one? I hope that this plan has more instruction time than the approximately 17 hours that's listed in the blended plan currently, because I don't believe, I'm comparing it to other schools around. Use Morton, for example, they're doing 100% remote, but the teachers will be in school for the full school day, and the kids will be online, getting instruction the full school day. So how is our child supposed to compare when we're only getting less than 17 hours of instruction time, and a lot of the time, the kid's going to be at home on their own again? That's my big concern. While I understand that we might not be able to be in school forever, any time making the relationships with the teachers is very important, so if we can do it safely, I would like to do it safely, but I'm more concerned, again, with what happens when we're 100% remote? Why, what, how come we can't have as much instruction time as other districts around us? And I would really like to see that soon, since we're starting school soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria, there will be that covered, that will be covered tonight.
Okay. Anyone else in the middle section?
My name is Tricia McVicker. And, can I start?
No.
Okay, great. I'm Tricia McVicker, and I am the parent of a sophomore here at Riverside Brookfield High School. I had the privilege of serving on the COVID Transition Committee. Believe it or not, I volunteered. I saw an email, I know, right? I saw an email, and I responded to Dr. Skinkis and Dr. Freitas, and I told them that I wanted to help if they thought that I could add value. A lot of people didn't know me until last night, when I invited parents to come and support the hybrid model with me. I was asked what my qualifications were, and so, somebody asked me to bring my resume. Unfortunately, I lost power, so I couldn't bring it. So I wanted to tell everybody here that I'm a nurse. I have a BSN since 1994. I passed my boards on the first attempt. I was an ER nurse for 10 years all over the country. I was a trial attorney for 10 years, and I had a daughter. And trial attorneys work a whole lot of hours, and so I decided that my daughter was more important, and so I came back into the nursing field. I am currently the Director of Nursing at a home health agency. We were one of the first in the city to start seeing COVID-positive patients in their homes when they were discharged from the hospital. I put a plan in place for my clinicians to safely see COVID-positive patients in their homes. I have worked every day since these kids went remote in March to make sure that my clinicians were safe. I myself have been to two COVID-positive patients' homes to start IVs because my nurses were having a bad day. I didn't get it, and none of them have gotten it, and so that was what I felt I added to this committee. I have, I have, I believe I have helped to, helped the committee to come up with a very safe return-to-school in-person plan that provides a safe environment for everybody here. The committee, which I, I feel strongly about, like I said, I volunteered my time, we have been accused of being the Lone Ranger or going rogue wanting to be the only, or the first school to do this hybrid model, and I can tell you that this is the furthest thing from the truth. We've been accused of allowing administration to make our decisions for us. I can tell you that Dr. Skinkis has asked for my opinion numerous times, and so this is not a top-down decision, this was a committee decision. This committee followed the guidance of the Governor, of IDPH, and of the CDC. Just a little story, on July 29th, the Governor was doing a groundbreaking ceremony at Fulton Labs across from my office, and I thanked him for getting kids back in school, and he told me that he was never going to close all the schools or mandate it because not every school was the same. We are not OPRF, we are not LT, and we are not Morton West that have 4,000 students that they don't want to bring back. We have developed a successful plan to bring these kids back into school. I understand that every teacher has their own situation, and I respect their opinion or their situations, but our kids need to be back in school. Our kids have been practicing this since March, they wear face masks, masks. We have had healthy, successful sports camps, and this isn't the Lake Zurich kids, right? Everybody brings that. Those kids went to a party, I, I've got the email from IDPH because I get all of those siren alerts. They went to a party where somebody was positive, and then they brought it into camp. I believe in this plan.
You have to wrap up.
I believe in this plan, I believe in this committee, and I believe in the hybrid approach to bringing kids back into school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the middle section? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the far section here.
Third section. Go ahead when you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Rios. I am the mother to two RB students. Like every other parent, my husband and I love our children more than anything else in the world. We believe the only acceptable and safe way to begin the school year is fully remote. The hybrid option isn't safe, and Apex is not a quality alternative. We did learn that we can sign up for hybrid and keep our kids at home. My concern is that this then puts an even heavier load on teachers to help those students learn what they missed during class time. Watching the rising case numbers in our area tells us it is not safe for staff or students to return. We will need to quarantine individuals or close and reopen the school repeatedly. Are we prepared for when a staff member or student dies or has long-term organ damage for the rest of their life? We all wish for some sense of normalcy, but what we want and wish for is not the same as what is necessary for the benefit of all involved. I began speaking by talking about how much I love my children, but I'm here tonight because my concern goes beyond just my own children. I don't buy into the worldview that because I pay taxes, which support our schools, that I'm owed something. I do know that I owe a debt to every staff member at RB, from the teachers to the janitorial staff, the principals to the teaching assistants, that I can never repay. I also know that I have a responsibility to the community at large. I do not want a section of this year's yearbook to be dedicated to all those we lost this year. I urge you board members and Dr. Skinkis to reconsider your decision to open up RB in a hybrid form. Starting the school year as remote only is the safest choice to make. The current plan is not safe for students, their families, and staff. Last, I want to speak to Dr. Skinkis's dismissive tone and words when he addressed the RBEA's concern in the landmark. He said those concerns were just union propaganda, and that it wasn't his job to respond to the RBEA. Actually, Dr. Skinkis, it is your literal job to respond and work with your teachers and your union, their, their union. You disrespected and dismissed the very people who take care of our children. That's unacceptable and unprofessional. Respectfully, I hope that you will rethink your relationship with our teachers and work to repair it. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Tom.
Okay, my name is Thomas Fuller. I've been a teacher at this high school for 26 years, and I'm speaking here on my behalf and on behalf of the Riverside Brookfield Education Association Welfare Committee. In the face of overwhelming scientific evidence that the COVID-19 pandemic is worsening, you, the RBHS District 2A Board of Education, and Dr. Kevin Skinkis are apparently deciding that students and staff will return to in-person learning at RB on August 17th. We, the RBEA Welfare Committee, wholeheartedly agree that teaching students face-to-face is the most effective form of education and what's in the best academic interests of all of our students. However, in light of the current facts regarding the global 19 pandemic, the RBEA Welfare Committee strongly disagrees with this potential decision to return to in-person instruction at this time. This decision would needlessly jeopardize the health and safety of the students, staff, faculty, and all of the RBHS extended family. When e-learning was thrust on all schools in Illinois due to the pandemic outbreak in March of this year, teachers at RB and all across the state were forced to immediately develop new methods to educate students. Without any time for proper training, the faculty at RB developed remote curricula that enabled all RBHS students to continue to thrive and learn at the high level that the students and the community have come to expect and deserve. Did all students take advantage of this learning opportunity? Unfortunately, no. But that was because of the state's mandate that no harm could be done to students' grades. The state's decision had nothing to do with the quality of remote education that RBHS teachers provided. That hamstring by the state is no longer in place. The quality of remote instruction still is. We have provided it in the past, we can and will provide it in the future. The captain of the Titanic, if you believe James Cameron's movie account, had the iceberg report in his hand while he decided to go full steam ahead with the ship. We all know how that turned out. If Major League Baseball, with all of its resources and testing and billions of dollars, cannot contain COVID and keep its players safe, then how can RBHS possibly expect to do so with handheld thermometers and hope? Common sense should rule the day. Almost all schools in the surrounding area of Institute Remote Learning, LT, OPRF, Naperville, Glenbard, 87 CPS, the list is endless. These schools have made the informed and prudent decision to put the safety of students and staff first and trust their educators to provide quality remote instruction for their students. RB teachers have proven that they can do that. Why not let them? Why put people in harm's way unnecessarily? Please do the right thing, Board of Education and Dr. Skinkis, and implement remote learning for the safety of the entire RB community. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Go ahead, Armando.
Good evening. My name is Armando Venegas, Special Educator at RB. A month ago, I sat here and read a statement on race inequity on behalf of the RBEA. Today, we continue this dialogue as it pertains to the health and well-being of RB students of color and their families during the pandemic. While Dr. Skinkis continues to reassure our staff that COVID-19 positivity rates in the communities surrounding RB are at safe levels, he fails to consider that racial minorities living in the RB community are more severely impacted by this pandemic than the numbers he shares with us show. Consider that the all-time positivity rate of white residents living in our school district is 4%, while the positivity rates of Black and Latino residents combined is 15%. In Cook County, the positivity rate for Blacks and Latinos is 17%, more than double that of white Cook County residents. When paired with race demographic data in our school district, these numbers indicate an overwhelming disproportion of positive tests in Black and Latino residents. While Black and Latinos make up about a third of our school district's population, they account for about half of the positive COVID-19 tests. While experts hypothesize reasons why our students of color are at higher risk of contracting the virus, we do know for sure that they will be at higher risk when they walk into our building. Just last week, the CDC released a report confirming this. According to their findings, Hispanic and Black children in particular were much more likely to require hospitalization for COVID-19, with Hispanic children about eight times as likely as white children to be hospitalized, while Black children were five times as likely. Further alarming is the increased risk that Black and Latino students, who are more likely to live in multi-generational households, might spread this virus to older, at-risk relatives. With respect to all of the hard work and time our administration and COVID-19 committee has spent to come up with a plan to get students into the building, we have more questions that need addressing. Can you definitively say that all of our students will be safe from infection within our campus? What will you do when one of our students tests positive? Will we provide the healthcare resources that many of our racially and economically disenfranchised families lack to treat the virus? If we begin this school year under an in-person learning model of any kind, students of color will be met with yet another inequity, the disproportionate high risk of contracting COVID-19. The only solution is to implement full remote learning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Armando. Tell me when you're ready, Dan.
All right. Good evening. I thank you for giving us the time to speak to you today before you make this important decision. My name is Dan Bonarigo. I'm the President of the RBEA, and I'm reading a statement on behalf of the RBA and the RBA Exec Board. The RBA Exec Board is advocating for a proper, fully-remote start to the school year for the following reasons. Number one, it is the safest option for the students, their families, staff, and our community. It allows for consistent, quality instruction for the students of RB and is provided solely by the professional staff members of RB. It allows for, for the least amount of disruption in the lives of our students, their families, our staff, and our community. It is fair for the students and the families who were not given a proper remote learning choice to begin with. A remote start would allow the district to develop a plan that meets the needs of all students and provides access to RB teachers and staff. It is the most effective use of taxpayer dollars, because the district does not need to pay to needlessly outsource our students' education. The current plan is to spend an additional $150 per student to access Apex. Additionally, Apex remote learning limits student access to many AP and elective courses. A properly implemented remote learning plan will save the district thousands of dollars in sub-costs. Based upon information from the Chicago Tribune, nearly 95% of the public high schools in Cook County have moved to a fully-remote start for the upcoming school year. This number seemingly increases by the day. Dr. Skinkis has mentioned numerous times that we will be remote at some point this fall. Since we know we will be remote eventually, why continue to spend taxpayer money preparing for this in-person model? The district should be spending its precious time and resources developing a robust virtual learning plan. This is where the district will see a return on its investment. The RB community cannot afford to fall further behind schools like OPRF, which has been planning a fully-remote start for over a month now. The RBA surveyed the staff with 98 responses. Almost 80% of our staff do not support implementing our current hybrid plan under current conditions. Almost 90% of the staff are not confident that in-person instruction will be safe. This decision cannot afford to be rushed. A school start date is merely self-imposed. After all, this is arguably the most important decision in the history of RB. Yet, the choice is actually quite simple. A fully-remote start is best if for no other reason than this, it is the only safe choice for the students, their families, the staff, and our community.
Thanks, Dan. This side? Any more?
My name is Pam Goodman. My son is a senior here at RB. In the video that was sent out last Friday evening, the superintendent claimed that there were no guides. He used the term "playbooks" for school districts during a pandemic. There are many guides for school districts available. In fact, there is even a guide to the guides. There are several librarians in the area who can assist you if you would like help finding these resources. You indicated that you did not consider a fully-remote option for families until it was required by Springfield in July. Early in the spring, every epidemiologist in the nation predicted that Illinois would have a second wave in the fall, a second wave that would be more deadly than the first. There was complete consensus on this matter. Knowing this, as we all did, it is extremely disappointing that you did nothing to prepare for a fully-remote option for the fall. At best, which no one predicted, the virus would maintain a residual presence in our company, in our community, and families and teachers who are at highest risk would need a fully-remote option. At worst, the entire school would need to be fully remote. At either extreme and at any place in the middle, planning for a remote option would have indicated prudence, professionalism, and competence. I question the process of choosing Apex to provide an online option for our students. Were the requirements for a school formally described, which other schools were considered? Was Apex chosen based on the convenience of having already worked for the district or based on its quality of instruction? I am questioning the procedures which were used to prepare for the fall. You did not survey the faculty and the staff. These are, without question, the individuals with the most experience with, knowledge about, and compassion for our students and their families. As parents, we entrust them with the lives of our children on a daily basis. You did not seek meaningful input from parents. Neither the faculty nor the staff nor the parents were asked for suggestions, were asked about... There was complete consensus on this matter. Knowing this, as we all did, it is extremely disappointing that you did nothing to prepare for a fully-remote option for the fall. At best, which no one predicted, the virus would maintain a residual presence in our community, and families and teachers who are at highest risk would need a fully-remote option. At worst, the entire school would need to be fully-remote. At either extreme and at any place in the middle, planning for a remote option would have indicated prudence, professionalism, and competence. I question the process of choosing Apex to provide an online option for our students. Were the requirements for a school formally described, which other schools were considered? Was Apex chosen based on the convenience of having already worked for the district or based on its quality of instruction? I am questioning the procedures which were used to prepare for the fall. You did not survey the faculty and the staff. These are, without question, the individuals with the most experience with, knowledge about, and compassion for our students and their families. As parents, we entrust them with the lives of our children on a daily basis. You did not seek meaningful input from parents. Neither the faculty nor the staff nor the parents were asked for suggestions, were asked about concerns, or were asked what we felt was best. You did not include resident and business owner taxpayers, whose money you will be sending to Apex and who will suffer the consequences of the likely outbreak that RB will contribute to. In closing, I would like to ask about your plan for the semester. Will you close the school after one teacher is in the ICU? Two teachers? Will you wait for one to die? What about the families of the faculty? What about the parents of our students? What if it is a student? Does a student need to die, or will it be sufficient to close the school if he or she is in the ICU? Exactly how many people need to be sick, and exactly how sick do they need to be for you to consider a better plan? Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Dr. Skinkis, would I be allowed to read a letter from a parent?
Sure.
Okay. My name is Anne Marie Dixon. I have two incoming seniors at RB, and this letter is from Dr. Anthony Perry, who has a senior who graduated this year and an incoming junior student. Dear RBHS Board, I'm writing this letter to thank you for the work that you have been putting into developing an education plan for the students of RBHS for this coming fall. As a parent, I value the educational experience you provide to my children, and as a physician, I know that well-informed plans can greatly minimize risk of infection spread. I know we don't have a playbook on how to handle educational programming during a pandemic, but I believe you have done a laudable job in developing a plan for RBHS. I think a couple of key points are very important. One, you have provided options. You allow parents and students to choose a modified, in-person curriculum or a fully-virtual educational program. I believe this is important, given the fact that risk of morbidity associated with COVID varies from family to family. Some households have older and/or frail family members living in the home with them, while others do not. Some students may have chronic medical conditions themselves, whereas most do not. For these reasons, I feel the options, as you have presented to parents and students, that allows the choice of a fully-virtual program to be highly appropriate. You are valuing in-person education. As a parent who believes greatly in the importance of education and specifically the myriad benefits of in-person learning, I believe that while some students might do well with an online educational program, many others simply will not. This could be for reasons ranging from learning abilities to practical issues such as access to technology, internet, or quiet study spaces. Thus, in my mind, your option for in-person education is a best practice to allow students to maximally achieve and avoid children losing further educational ground. Number three, the plan works to minimize risk. From the healthcare environment, we have learned that basic protective measures can significantly reduce risk of transmission. These includes core elements of social distancing, wearing masks, and hand hygiene. I believe your plan for that reduces crowding, requires mask-wearing, promotes handwashing, performs temperature screening, and even modifies building HVAC is a strong plan that works to minimize risk while acknowledging it cannot eliminate it. I believe that combination of providing options, valuing in-person education while working actively to minimize risk, is a best-practice approach in managing through the current pandemic. I also believe that it is my responsibility to provide appropriate education to my child in order to support the in-person care precautions, which I will do. I thank you for a plan that provides options to your families and thus allows choices, as you have shared with the RBHS community. For me and my family personally, we believe in the value of in-person education and believe the harm of losing access to that outweighs the risk of infection associated with a well-implemented plan that minimizes that risk. Sincerely, Anthony J. Perry, M.D. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Thank you for being on the committee as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this side? All right, who's going to get people from over there?
Kylie, could you talk with Mr. Mannin, see if there's any from the overflow room, please?
Come on in. Thank you. Yes, have a seat.
My name is Guy Adami. My son is a senior at RB. I had a lot written here to say, but I'm going to keep it really short. My opinion as a medical researcher and virologist is that we need to take the best knowledge we have of the way coronavirus was transmitted, the incubation period of disease, the morbidity rate in different age groups, and a realistic time plan for vaccine availability, and transform that into a community plan that makes sense. I disagree with some of the statements that I heard tonight on coronavirus transmission in teenagers. And I want to, I've taught some online this summer. It is possible to do, and it works fine. It's not that different than teaching in person. Then I'd like to conclude by saying, sorry, the right mask properly worn stops coronavirus transmission. There's a lot of agreement on that. I have, from what I've seen tonight among some speakers and from watching my own son wear a mask, I do not feel our students are capable of wearing a respirator properly for a six-hour period. For that reason, I think that an RB teacher administered online education for now is the best option, is the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy.
Hello, my name is Veronica Hunt. I will be a sophomore next year at RB, and I would like to say how important it is to me to be in the hybrid model next year for learning. As the school year is approaching, it has become a very big concern to me that I wouldn't be learning in person. At the end of the year, I did not feel that I learned at all, barely. I didn't feel that I learned very much through remote learning. I even had a teacher say to me that your future teachers will understand the gap in the knowledge because of this, and that's a kind of scary thought to me. And I also think that the being in RB, being in the school environment, it is a great school environment, and having it taken away was very difficult. And I would just like to say that I really need the hybrid option. I think that the amount, I've been back in school a couple of times with, during the pandemic for cheer tryouts, and everything went fine, and it was really great, and I came back for registration, and it was the amount of joy from the small things that I got, like even buying a mask for school. I wouldn't think that I would be so happy to buy a mask before, but it made me, it made me feel joy again, which I had sort of lost through this pandemic. And I think that it is very important that I go back to school and am able to resume activities the way, not, maybe they're not the way that they were before, but I think it's very important that they are available and that going to school and learning in person is available and is an option. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ready? Good evening. My name is Charles Sarska. I'm an alumni of the RB class of 2019. I now go to the Illinois Institute of Technology. I have heard many people calling for the RB to start the Fall 2020 Semester fully-remote in order to protect the health of the student body. I have had a different experience. During this pandemic, I have had not a single classmate die of COVID-19. I have had, however, two classmates, friends the age of 19 and 20, commit suicide due to the immense loneliness and isolation the lockdowns have caused. As the president of my fraternity, I've had several brothers reach out to me, wanting to talk to me, feeling lonely and sad as well. I think it is important that when considering this fully-remote system of learning, not only to take into account the physical health, but also the mental health of the students. In my college experience as a college freshman, and the quality of learning fell dramatically with the lockdowns. Teachers did not seem to care as much about their students, and they were not held accountable. Some classes, especially math, science, and engineering, were extremely difficult to learn online without any in-person instruction, or the community of great RB students who always help each other out. I'd like to leave you with the words of Dr. Fauci. We need to do everything in our power to reopen our schools. I'm in full lockstep agreement that we need to reopen our schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mannin, is there anybody else that'd like to speak?
Keep going, go to the plan. Okay. All right. Let's go to the next visitor's statements, where the discussion items, where we go to the RBH COVID-19 informational plan. I would like to rec, we did recognize the committee, I'd like to recognize the committee again. I'd like to express that the direction given to the committee from the board, the community members elected, was to develop an in-person learning environment. That was our goal as a community, was to have the kids back in school. So I think the committee, you can tell us the plan, but it was, I personally asked Kevin to administer and organize this committee to, in that direction. So, go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Wes. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge, you know, I'll try to, I wrote down some of the questions that we heard through citizen comments so that we could address some of those. This will take a good 20 minutes, so I would ask for your patience. I'll try to be brief. Mary Ann, the first page of the report, obviously, this is the transition COVID committee. So you see myself as the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, principal, assistant principals, interim director of special ed, instructional coaches, who are also faculty members at Riverside Brookfield High School. Kristi Hughes, Lindsay Minow, Aubrey Prince. We had four representatives from the RBA exec board, as well as faculty, Diane Bonarigo, Doug Schultz, Jenna Osborne, and Mark Helgeson. So in total, we had seven faculty members on the committee. We had seven administrators. We had four parents, Julie Lobley, Mike Murphy, Anne Marie Dixon, and Tricia McVicker. And we also had two student advisors, Michael and Lily, who are also student board members. So we did feel that we addressed a lot of the stakeholders that were part of the committee so that we had a full gamut of input from, not from only the students, the administration, parents, as well as teachers. I think everybody needs to understand, Dr. Freitas and I filmed that video, and we sent that out to families on Friday. This is a very fluid situation. And while I understand the comments and the landmark may not be portrayed, and I apologize if they were portrayed wrongly, and I apologize if I offended anybody in the RBA, because I worked very closely this, especially over the last three months with Mr. Bonarigo, to try to work out through our MOUs on stipends, as well as being on this committee. And Dan and I talk probably two to three times a week just on different information that was shared. We talked two times this weekend. I was sitting at a baseball tournament for my son. I called Dan from the parking lot, and we talked a little bit on Friday, and he shared the initial results from the RBE survey. So it, I feel it has been a very collaborative process. We also made sure that every Friday before those weekly communications went out, that anybody that was a parent on the committee, so the four parents, as well as Kristi Hughes, who is a parent and a faculty member, all had input on those communications to make sure we would be addressing parent concerns as well as student concerns that were being sent out. So again, I think we were doing the best we could in a short amount of time. As soon as the state went to Phase Four and the governor acknowledged under Phase Four that the schools can open up with in-person or some form of in-person learning, that was the goal of the committee. I also heard that it was irresponsible for not do a remote plan. The first thing the committee addressed in its first two meetings was to address a remote plan in the event we had to go remote. So we actually worked backwards. The committee work started with the remote plan. We did not post this plan right away because we knew the goal of the committee and the direction of the board was to go in person. But the first thing we actually did was start with a remote so that at any time we couldn't effectively implement the in-person plan, we would be able to default to this remote plan. I will share that remote plan with you tonight. It was shared with the board, it was shared with the faculty last Thursday. Anne Marie, can you go to the next slide, please? Keep going to the first model. Keep going, please, to the model. Okay, so, yeah, please continue, there you go, a little more. Hybrid model, so the hybrid model was put together based on the survey results that we sent out to the community. There were some concerns of, why didn't we address in the, in that original survey that went out to both, the three groups? It went out to all students, it went out to all staff, and it went out to parents. So we addressed all three stakeholder groups, and the, we provided three different options of in-person learning. And the first thing we wanted to gauge was, what was your preference of an in-person learning model? There was some questions submitted of why, there was some concern shared from the RBA, well, why didn't you have a remote option on there? The task of the committee was to try to identify a way to open the schools with in-person learning. So that's why we sent out the three different models. Knowing that the late start, full student body on campus like a normal school year would probably be the most unlikely until we have a vaccine. And then we offered the half-day option with no lunches, and then we offered the reduced enrollment option of a hybrid plan. Based on the feedback we received from the staff and from the families, hybrid and half-day option were the two popular options. The students were 52, just over 52% in regards to the half-day option. They did not have the preference for the hybrid option. So we took a combination of the half-day option and the hybrid option, we put them together, and came up with this half, this hybrid model. The hybrid model was developed through this learning subcommittee, which was Dr. Freitas, Ms. Linquist, Ms. Augustine, and all the teachers and faculty on the staff and one parent, Ms. Julie Lobley.
And Michael.
And Michael, I'm sorry, Michael. And so we had representation, again, from the stakeholder groups on this subcommittee to help put together this plan. Just briefly, I'll go through why this plan was developed the way it was. I'll give Ms. Linquist a quick opportunity, or Dr. Freitas, if they want to fill in anything. But Mondays, why did we choose Monday as a PLC day for staff as well as a remote learning day? The faculty on the committee felt it would be best to start their week for teachers by having this PLC time to get together with groups of the teachers or with their departments or department meetings to identify where students were at after each week of hybrid learning. And so that's why we put this on Mondays. So the first hour and a half of that Monday is for faculty to do professional development, PLC time, which is professional learning community time, for them to go through whether they need to share data, planning, any kind of problem-solving that each department or teachers needed to do. And then we had the synchronous learning. Synchronous learning is a buzzword that's come out very strongly through COVID, and that's like learning at the same time. So basically, similar to in-class learning, NSYNC learning. And so the idea of the Monday is that there'd be a 25-minute check-in where each, for each student with their teachers to go through their schedule and get kind of the lay of the land for the week, what you'll be doing in person as well as in your virtual classes. And then those virtual office hours, again, are for interventions, makeup, if the student had to take a sick day, had to miss work, do things like that, so they would have times where they could either Zoom with a teacher, Google hangout with a teacher, or see a teacher for individual help. What we tried to do with the in-person model is so that a student would get through their schedule at least once a week in person. And so the A through L students would come on Monday through, on Tuesday, excuse me, for 8 to 11:55. There'd be a 40-minute break for teachers, as well as time for students to transition out of the building. And then the M through Z students would take online classes where the teachers would, can teach from their classroom. Now, we have talked a little bit through some of the accommodation requests we receive on whether or not we will allow some teachers to work from home or teach remotely during this portion to accommodate their requests. And so we're still, we were still working through that, those types of variables with the committee, as well as with the administration. And then on Wednesday, and then there's virtual office Some people have asked, and we've received a lot of the questions of, why A through L, M through Z, not freshman, sophomore, junior, senior? We have a lot of mixed classes. We have a lot of classes that have sophomores, juniors, and seniors. And so it made sense to do it A through L instead of the, by grade level. Thursday then flips the schedule so that students have five, six, and seven in the morning, and then the opportunity for in-person intervention or makeup. And then one through four, it virtually, for the M through Z students, and then that schedule's flipped again for, the M through Z are in person on Friday, A through L are in the afternoon. We had a long discussion on the committee. As I touch on, I'll touch on the Apex model here in a little bit, but we had a long discussion on the committee early in the process. If students, when before the governor came out and said you had to request, have two plans, one in-person and one remote. We had talked about this hybrid model serving both of our populations. We had talked with the teachers on the committee about the possibility of streaming their lessons while they were teaching live in the classroom, and streaming to kids at home who couldn't come on campus. That was not a popular decision by the committee. The teachers were concerned, as well as even some of the building administration, that it would be a task that teachers wouldn't be able to manage trying to supervise, teach, instruct, and help the kids that were in person, and then trying to answer questions or do things with the students online. So we went as far as researching some webcams and talking about that in depth as a committee and as a learning subcommittee, and that's where we came back and said that that was probably not the best option, to do filming of the teachers' individual classrooms. Ms. Linquist and Dr. Freitas, anything on the hybrid model that I missed?
No, boss, I believe, you know, you covered it, but there was one question. This is from Lisa Gaynor, and I just want to say thank you to all the parents who have submitted questions. Guys, you are never a bother. We are here to service you guys. So though it's shocking when we have 50 emails at 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, our job is to service you all. So please continue to send us questions because we are here to serve you all. But one of the questions was, is how can we ensure, and this is from Lisa Gaynor, how can we ensure that only three days of learning with teacher, in parentheses, in-person or synchronous, is enough to ensure that the full class curriculum can be taught? Okay? Kylie, you want to answer that first? Okay? So ensuring that the entire curriculum could be taught, and then I'll give my thoughts.
I mean, we certainly, we certainly recognize for any, any school in any model that they go back to school, that there is going to be some challenge to a reduction of the amount of time that students are either in person, or taking the fact that, you know, students may not be at a school building at all. And so, you know, is there a possibility that every single thing that we would cover in a normal school year is not going to be able to be hit at this point? Yes, that's a reality that we need to face. And so there is, you know, conversations that take place where we have to start talking about essential skills, what students need, what sort of skills they need to be able to take with them from one year to the next, or from one semester to the next. The fact of the matter is whether we are in a fully remote situation where students are receiving their instruction virtually, or whether we are in an in-person hybrid model where we are reduced, none of those options are going to be the same type of education, the same coverage of education, the same scope of education as it would be in a normal school year. And I think that's something that we're going to be adjusting for, for a while now, because going back to school in the way that we know it to be, I think is, is going to take a long time for us to get back to. And so we are going into this knowing that we are going to have to be creative in how we, how we approach that. Any way that we approach differently than a regular school year, where our students are with our teachers every single day, and they are receiving the best instruction possible from our staff, any deviation from that is going to be a challenge, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to adjust for that.
Dr. Freitas, anything on the hybrid real quick?
Well, really quick, just to add to what Ms. Linquist said, you know. Guys, as a creator of curriculum at one of my previous schools, you know, a curriculum is a live document that is always evolving, is evolving with different classes. It's evolving when we learn new teaching strategies. So what we're going to ask of our teachers, of our partners in learning, is that we look and analyze the curriculum carefully to make sure that we cover the essential topics to the best of our abilities. I know there could be some things that are missed, but if we focus on the skills and we modify the curriculum, we believe we can do a good job at covering many important topics for every subject matter.
There was one more question that I, really quickly, there was a question that was asked, I think just today, about why students who attend school first through fourth period, like an A through L student, why that student doesn't go home and then log in for fifth through seventh and continue the rest of their schedule? And I just wanted to give you a little insight to that. In reducing the population of the students, obviously, we're keeping some students at home each day, and so that decision was made so that every population of students, every cohort of students, either A through L or M through Z, has some kind of school each day. And we recognize that if I'm a teacher and I'm teaching my first through fourth period classes in person, there's a pretty strong chance that my fifth through seventh period classes with a reduced amount of time and virtual potentially could be in different places. I'm managing now two cohorts of students, so my M through Z kiddos are not going to be at the same place on Tuesday during fifth period as my A through L kiddos. It's going to take longer to keep all of our kids in the same place. So that's why the decision was made for students not to just go home at 11:55 on Tuesday and then immediately log in at 12:45, because we want each cohort to have some form of school each day.
We also thought by opening a school year in a hybrid model allows some students to meet their teachers, establish relationships and routines. We talked with the RBEA and with the faculty and staff last Thursday during a voluntary staff meeting, that, about the importance of doing social emotional learning with the students during the time they're in person. While we understand it's important to also get into curriculum, but we also wanted to make sure that we were covering the social emotional learning, like you heard tonight from a few of the students, that they knew they had, teachers were working to build a, back up those relationships we lost fourth quarter from last year, as well as some of that FaceTime with students so that they could feel supported, start establishing those relationships, so in the event we have to go remote. The next thing I'd like to show, do we feel the hybrid model is safe? We think this provides us the best opportunity to implement the social distancing that was in the IDPH and the governor's guidelines, up to six feet when possible, reduced enrollment, we've eliminated lunch periods, and then some of the other safety measures that were discussed about increasing the HVAC, hand sanitizers and wipes in each classroom, doing thermoscans. We think this is the safest model in order to try to bring students back on campus. The next slide, Mary Ann, is the student orientation model. So a lot of questions have been asked about this. So we recognize as a committee that this is a very fluid situation, and so as a committee we came up with the student orientation model so that students by grade level can come A through L, M through Z on campus and meet their teachers, get general expectations, get general guidelines, maybe get syllabus, put a name with a face. We think this would be, this is very important to, with whatever model we choose, because we want to have students know who they're working with. It's intimidating enough for a freshman to start their first day of high school, but then to give them a Chromebook and say, hey, go online and figure out who your teacher is, what they look like, what their expectations are. We don't know if that's the best thing for kids right now. And there's also this orientation model. It kind of provides us, very similar to a restaurant of a soft opening. It gives us an opportunity to bring 200 students into the building, or slightly under 200 students in the building, for each portion of the day, to see how those thermoscans work, the temperature checks, the one-way hallways, the social distancing in classrooms. Now, I've said this on the video, and I think I've said this to the faculty when I met with them last week, this, this soft opening also gives us an opportunity to realize if we could pull off this hybrid model. And at any time during this orientation process, if we feel that, hey, there's still some things we need to work out, or that this is, if we had trouble doing it with 200 students, how are we going to do it with 800 students starting the next week? We would have to shut down and go to full remote until we could work out those details and reassemble the committee to try to work out those details. I, I want the parents and I want the staff and the board knows this already, because I've talked with them on multiple occasions, and each month when we met, this is a very fluid situation. If we're moving more than one day at a time, or one week at a time, we're kidding ourselves. Because we could be doing things great here in the hybrid model, and everything could be set up great if we have an uptick for a couple days in our community, it may not make sense to bring students back on campus. It may make sense to go back to remote. All of these variables have to be taken into account. So this is why we came up with this student orientation model, and then we put a teacher planning day at the end of that week, so that after teachers had an opportunity to work for four days with smaller groups of students, and to get the students on campus, they could then prepare for the next week of instruction, whether that's hybrid or remote, but also prepare for like, hey, I, this, I realized this now that I had students in my classroom, we need to make this adjustment. Or I need to move my desks around in my classroom so that there's more room for social distancing, or whatever it may be. Student orientation, Kylie, anything on that?
No, I think you got it.
Dr. Freitas, anything on student orientation?
No, I think you explained it everything well, boss.
Okay, and people watching on TV, I know, I know some of my parents that are in the stands, I can see everybody adjusting their backs, it's not comfortable to sit on these bleachers, so I'm trying to go as quick as possible, so I apologize if it sounds like I'm rushing. Mary Ann, can you show the next model, please? Okay, so this is the fully remote model. As I stated earlier in the year, and I'll, this will be sent out to parents once we get started, but we didn't want to put this out to people because we wanted to encourage people, that were, the goal of the committee was to work in person, to try to develop on their Phase Four, the governor's guidelines, an in-person model. We had put together a hybrid, the remote learning model, the first thing we did as a committee, that's where we spent our first two weeks on, was developing a remote model, because we all recognized that at any time during this process, if things are not safe, if there's an uptick in cases, if we're not able to successfully implement our hybrid model plan, this would have to be our default option. So this was actually the first thing we did, not, it's not something we did not do. We actually tweaked this model, again, in the last two weeks to reflect closer to the hybrid model, from input of the committee, so that in the event we have to go from hybrid remote or remote hybrid, there was a lot of similarities in what kids were doing. So having their first period and then virtual work in the afternoon, breaking up the day so that students can, the Monday was exactly the same, whether it was in hybrid or remote. So this is the remote model. Now, we did field some questions on there. Basically, it's, it's four hours of synchronous teaching with about an hour, hour and 20 for student work in the afternoon, to kind of work on things that they learn in their classes, and then time at the end of the day for teachers to have office hours. There was a question submitted, well, what are teachers doing during the student independent work time? Teachers will be available to answer student questions, to meet with students individually, to take phone calls, to continue to plan with students. So it's not that the teachers are off for that hour and 20 minutes, it's just, that's an opportunity for them to work with individual students, field emails, work with students who maybe had to miss a day, catch up something. So there's time built in for that. Kylie, you want to continue, anything on the remote model?
There was one question that, and I think it was mentioned earlier in the comment section, there's some questions about why students aren't logging into synchronous virtual instruction all day, every day. And I think one of the students that was up kind of commented, and that opened the door for one of the considerations that we made. Having lived the fourth quarter, none of us thought it was wise to put students in front of a computer for eight hours a day, for even six hours a day. There's lots of information out there that talks about that that is not something that's beneficial to students, for them to be staring in at their Chromebook all day. So we wanted to try to balance the synchronous virtual instruction with some time for students to have some independent time, work through some things on their own, grapple a little bit, experience some struggle, right, and still ask questions. But we were very, very conscious when we made this schedule about the amount of screen time that a student would have. And we also were trying to consider, as we did in fourth quarter, what is going on at a student's house? And the response to that question is, we don't know what's going on at a student's house when they're at home. If we are looking at, and when we were developing the fully remote schedule, we were operating under the governor's orders, or the ISB suggestion, the governor's suggestion, that we come into school if we can. So in, in our minds, as we were creating this, the fully remote schedule was one that would be enacted if we had to go into remote learning. And we know that from fourth quarter, some of our students, as we were forced into remote learning, have parents who are essential workers, and they are at home with their brothers, with their sisters, they are taking care of students, they have parents that may have lost jobs. There's a lot of things that are going on in a student's family that we wanted to take into consideration, and we just didn't feel that it was appropriate to put students on a Zoom call from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And that is why that decision was made, to give some student independent work time in the afternoons.
So Kylie, I don't mean to interrupt, but it looks like there's only two and a half hours on Wednesday and Friday.
Because we have an odd schedule, yes. So that was the trick, is figuring out how to even that out with seven periods.
It just strikes me that this fully remote is almost just like the spring. I don't remember my, that's about how much time they spent in the spring, and it, and it didn't work very well for me and my family.
I think the main thing that we've, the main feedback that we've gotten, the piece that was perhaps missing in the spring was that scheduled synchronous virtual instruction. And so we were trying to combat, we're trying to balance, right, the amount that we're having students logged on, but we're also trying to make a routine for students, and we're trying to also develop some of their independence as they are home remote learning. So that was, that was our challenge. Sure, you know, if we had an eight-period day, it would have looked very different. So we built in those virtual office hours to give students...
Why couldn't we do it more like Monday? You've got Monday, you've got, you know, three and a half, maybe almost four hours. These other days, you have two hours.
We were looking at depth versus breadth in that situation. So when you look at Monday and you see that students are with their teachers 25 minutes, that's like the initial check-in to kind of send them off on a successful week. Doing that every single day of the week, I can say from my teaching background, it would be challenging for me to be able to get into the depth of the curriculum if I was only seeing my students 25 minutes at a time. And so that's why we spaced that out, and we broadened that instructional time on those other days.
So the different, I guess, I'm just trying to count hours here, and we've got 15 hours of learning in the remote, and if I go back to in-person, there's like 25 hours of learning. So I'm, I think we're getting cheated. Maybe I'm wrong.
Come with questions, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the concern of students being on a screen all day, I'm on Zoom meetings all day, every day, and it can be a challenge, for sure. But those students that aren't motivated, those students that don't need the extra help, those students that don't need the teacher office hours, they've got a lot of time off. I, I, I just, I'm just, I'm extremely concerned because I know a lot of kids who are just going to play video games every afternoon.
Yeah.
They just, they just are.
This middle kid, right, he's, he's not that, that high learner, he's not number five in the class, he's not going to go and independent study, but he's not a low learner, he doesn't need all this one-on-one time. He's going to fall behind, he's not going to learn anything. And we're going to go to college and we're going to say, oh, well, it's a gap year, it's COVID, all my teachers learned, taught from home.
So I'm not, I'm not seeing an hours total under the hybrid, and I thought I saw that at one point.
It's a...
I believe it's at the bottom.
But it's 12, 12 in class.
It wasn't the bottom, I'm not sure if it got put off of it.
It's on the next page. 12 in class plus five independent is the fully remote, right?
Correct.
So that's 17. So what are the actual instruction hours on the hybrid?
It's on page... Just about seven in-person, if you count the in-person, eight in-person, and then they get a, an additional, I think, four in virtual.
I mean, I think, kind of to piggyback on what you were saying, Gina, I think in both cases, you're looking at a remarkably decreased amount of instruction time.
Right.
Yeah, because it's essentially 12:30 to 3:05 every day, and on Wednesday and Fridays, it's 10:35 to 3:05, that there's no synchronous interaction.
Virtual office hours, don't, don't the teachers have a period of office hour anyway?
Teachers have a planning, they have a conference and prep period, but that's, that's not a period, that's not where they would meet with students.
That doesn't count on Monday, like, two, hour and a half and an hour.
So the teachers contractual five periods and then their two...
We've got a lot of teacher time off here.
Virtual office hours, don't the teachers have a period of office hour anyway?
Teachers have a planning, they have a conference and prep period, but that's not where they would meet with students.
That doesn't count on Monday, like two, hour and a half and an hour.
So the teachers contractual five periods-
We've got a lot of teacher time off here.
The teacher contractual time within the hybrid, or the remote schedule, they still do their periods one through seven. So if they had a planning period or a conference period to call parents, those still happen under dedicated period. The virtual office hours, we were expecting them to be available to students for in-person intervention if they needed it via Zoom or Google Hangout on the remote model. The one thing that's changed that the committee discussed very early, and this is from feedback from the board and from Dr. Freitas, put out a stakeholder survey at the end of fourth quarter that went to students, staff, and parents. So again, another piece of information where we polled all stakeholders. We did edit an executive summary from the fourth quarter where we had the e-learning or the remote learning for fourth quarter when the pandemic first hit. And one of the biggest things we had was, you know, the not having a set schedule, teachers not being on in-person daily with students. And so what we've changed here is that the intent would be, students would be, teachers would be on campus, working from their classroom. So they still had classroom resources, reliable internet service, the ability to demonstrate a lab if they wanted to, or demonstrate something with the resources they have in their classroom, and have like almost a virtual class with the students online. So that was, that was the improvements we've made since the fourth quarter e-learning.
Was there ever consideration given where, because I can appreciate keeping the schedule similar for the kids, was there any consideration given that on Tuesday, if it's only periods one through four, that those periods one through four were extended? So maybe instead of it being, you know, a 40, 45-minute period, could they meet for an hour? So they get a little bit more instruction, but then there's still time for student independent work time, just not as much.
Are you saying for Wednesday and Friday, when they're hour of virtual office hours, because they don't have the eighth period, maybe do those periods longer?
Just for every day. I mean, I've gone online to a lot of other surrounding high schools, and our plan is the least robust per minute. It just, it just is.
I will say that the intention of the committee in that one to two 20 student independent work time, that would be time where students would be carrying through what they did one through four of their periods. We're looking at our teachers giving students extended work, extended practice, where they would be practicing those skills. So the intention behind the committee in the structuring of this was not, was truly that students would be working during that time, and that there would be a carryover from what they did in the beginning half of the day into that student independent work time, which is why the virtual office hours then are after it. Because essentially, right, it's the I do, we do, you do. So when we're in the one through four periods, we're able to do some guided practice and talk about the things that students are going to practice on their own, give them an opportunity to practice it in that, in that orange band where the independent work time is, and then end each day with an opportunity for students to then ask more questions. But I certainly see what you're saying, I'm taking some notes.
Yeah, and I appreciate all the work that the committee did. I just know, in my household in the spring, my son finished his work in record time, it wasn't very rigorous. And I'll be honest, there were teachers that he did not see past March. He didn't. There was no Zoom. And I understand, it was difficult, right, like you're survival mode at that point. But there were classes that he did not see the teacher on any online platform once past March, not once. And one teacher, he did have a Zoom, and they played video games together.
Yeah, it's like they dialed it in.
It wasn't robust, and I, I get it. It was survival mode. I just don't want that to happen again. That's my greatest fear. And I know a lot of parents out there are extremely concerned with that as well.
Revisit why we can't stream the class? Why can't we stream-
Can't what?
Periods one, if we go to this, if we go to this-
Live streaming, oh, I know.
For the hybrid.
The hybrid, and we go on Tuesday, why you can't stream the in-person on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So a person, so a child who is at home, for all these extended circumstances, can basically take all their classes.
One of the things that we talked about with regard to the live streaming piece, we certainly know, of course, that there are some schools that are going that route. There's a couple issues when you look at the hybrid model and you consider the live streaming. One is that when you reduce the number of kids that are in the building and we have those opposite schedules, again, you have two cohorts of students that could be in different places. And so that presents a challenge. The other, because it certainly was talked about, the idea, right, that school just happens as it happens, and half the kids are at home and half the kids are in the building watching. I did teaching, you know, I taught for a long time, for 13 years, and I can tell you that managing the students that are in front of you and the questions and the interactions and the genuine interaction that it takes to create a culture and a community of learners in the classroom, and then also have to worrying about a second entire community of students who are at home, I don't know how you, I don't know how you do that effectively as a teacher.
Don't we have support staff? What are they doing? Can't they help with this?
I mean, we have support staff-
It's like a TA in college, right?
We don't have support staff assigned to every teacher.
Well, we wouldn't need it in PE, and we wouldn't need it in-
Sure.
Some classes, we'd only need it in STEM classes, right?
Well, I wouldn't say you would only need it in STEM classes. I mean, if I'm teaching, if I'm teaching an English class and I am working with the students who are in front of me, and I have questions popping up that are on the computer, we're talking about two very different worlds. And so am I turning away from the kids that I'm supposed to be managing, wearing their masks and social distancing, and am I worrying about these kids on the computer and what they're doing, right? I think we're asking our teachers to be in two different places at the same time. And to me, as a teacher, that feels like I'm teaching two classes at once. And I don't think if I'm doing that, I'm giving either of those my best or full attention.
Could there be a compromise here where maybe first quarter and then you guys collect data to see on student engagement? And, I mean, I don't know what exactly data you want to collect, but just to see how many students are taking advantage of work.
Something similar to that survey we talked about from-
If we take these core classes and do a look at how we could possibly put two teachers in a core class, maybe we could accomplish that.
I was going to say, I think, I think we need, regardless of how we end up here, we need some kind of a survey similar to what we saw after the end of the spring, right? Because we all know it was not, it was absolutely scrambling, but it was not successful. So how do we then identify what was not successful moving forward?
Well, I don't think we had a good survey, though, at the end of spring on how parents felt the education experience was. It's more anecdotal where people start to see what their college students were doing, what their high school students were doing. That would have been helpful to ask parents, how did you feel your students?
I thought we did.
Did you feel your students were getting the equivalent education? What I heard is no. Did you feel your students had time to interact with other students and had group discussion? What I heard was no. And that would have given us a little more fodder. But I think moving forward, we absolutely need parent feedback on the quality of education the kids are getting with this model.
So we did have an executive summary that Hector did present on that, it basically highlighted the concerns you're saying tonight. Parents were not happy with the e-learning. They recognize that it was a scramble, but they also, some of the comments that were brought up about not seeing teachers online, not having a set schedule, there were a lot of gaps. We did have that survey, Dr. Freitas shared that with the committee. That's why we first started to present the remote, put together the remote model in the committee. We established about teachers being on campus to teach their classes. But I do think it's important that as, whatever model we decide to implement tonight and start the year off with or move to, I think a quarterly survey to get feedback from the parents and students would be helpful.
And I think it's even more than student to teacher. We have to remember that, you know, whether we're using Zoom or whatever platform, it's student to student. The discussion got lost. And so maybe as we grow this model, we could use more time online, maybe some of that office hours could become discussion time with four or five students, because that's where a lot of learning happens also. Well, I think that could be the goal of the orange, right, is small group instruction, interventions, whatever, you know, there's a class that has projects, so I'm meeting, and you can literally have five Google meets windows open at once on your computer and be having, and be monitoring or waiting for them to interact with you. So you could do some kind of group work like that.
One of the benefits here is we're small enough, we can pivot, we can do that, what you're talking about. We can take it in a quarter and a quarter and get feedback from the students and the teachers and how are they doing, how can we do it better? We can quickly move and do it better every quarter. And that's the goal, right, is to teach students the best we can in this crazy environment, which was, I circle back to the goal of in-person learning, because it's the best way to teach children.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I know we all agree that in the, in the spring, it's not that it was not working at all, it just wasn't good enough. We all know this, that all models presented tonight are already addressing this. And I appreciate the concern about screen time. But, you know, screen time is just one of many factors that layer in this extremely complex analysis of what is best for the entire RB community. So I actually very much agree with some of the questions about, you know, regardless of what happens tonight, the planning doesn't stop. And just in general, I greatly appreciate, you know, the thoughtfulness of all the comments from all sides. But I really, I would rather overshoot in our ambition in what the plans are set up now. And then, you know, if we get feedback from the students and teachers and everybody says, you know, this is, that would be, I think that it would make me feel more comfortable as opposed to going at it from the other end and saying, because we're worried about screen time and this and that and that, we come up with a relatively conservative plan if I compare it with what other great high schools are doing. And I would personally support pushing this in the other direction and really challenging all of us to, to see whether we should consider some of this.
I also think with the hybrid, we're opening the chance for labs. You know, Benny, you know, I had a college student who really felt that she lost a lot by not getting the end of her labs. You know, some of our high school students not getting their labs, at least with this hybrid. I mean, you can't not have the lab for a semester or a year for certain classes, you just can't have that. You might end up having to repeat it or take another class in college in order to be qualified to take that class. So some things just don't translate online. And so it's nice to have the opportunity, as long as we can, while things are stable, to be able to have those experiences.
Okay, are there any more curriculum? I think this is a curriculum part, and then we'll get into the actual building and the school.
So just a couple of small, like, operational questions. So on the fully remote, is it fair to equate that student independent work time to homework? Like, there would not be additional homework? Like, this is their-
There could be, there could be additional homework, but this would be a place where they can start and then circle back with teachers to ask questions or if they needed time to work on a project.
I think that's important for parents to understand, right, that there is, there is the school day and there still might be additions to the school day.
Correct.
And then-
So the state's guidelines were two and a half hours of synchronous learning, and then up to a total of five hours a day. And that could be through independent study, group work, online fitness, you know, doing different things.
Okay. And then, in both cases, clubs and extracurriculars and sports are all still slotted in that 3:05 slot in a more traditional after-school?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay. So in both models, the clubs, the extracurriculars, the athletics, they all began in that same after-school timeframe? Or would we ever see those clubs or activities meet during-
Outside of the educational day that's set up.
Okay.
So we would not start things earlier.
Okay. So I wanted to make sure about that. And then, and this may or may not be a curriculum question, but, but on the hybrid, so what is the estimated number of persons you're going to have in the building then?
So we talked about this today. Kristen, do you want to answer that? Do you want to start with this, or do you want me to take that?
I believe, I believe Kylie was looking at that data.
Kylie, you have that information?
I have, have you? Yeah, of course, because, yeah, I have some numbers here. So one of the questions that was submitted was what is the anticipated class size and building size during in-person school day for the hybrid model? Currently, the average would be, under the hybrid model, 16.8 students per classroom. And roughly, we should have about, short of 1,000 people. So maybe 800 students, another 150 to 200 adults.
Okay, thank you.
So 16 is the class size?
Yes, 16.8, to be specific.
Make sure a safe lab environment.
Ms. Towner reminded me, tonight is our first meeting with our two student board members who also, advisors, student advisors, who also participated. So before I go into the apex and how that all came about, do you want to touch on the fully, since Michael, you were on the learning committee, Lilly, you were on the committee, you want to talk about the hybrid model, the virtual model?
Yeah, you can go first. Okay, so-
Can I speak up, Lilly?
Yeah, I think that the hybrid model is the best option personally, because I think we all agree that in-person learning is the most effective. In fact, I'm pretty sure everyone thinks that, except there are the health concerns. And I see both sides. So I don't want to, you know, put anyone's views, belittle any of them. But, yeah, I think mental health is a big concern. I know some students talked about that. And that does have to play with screen time. You know, I'm a senior right now, and I've started writing my college essays, and I'll just look at my personal statement for like six hours straight. And it just hurts my brain a little bit, because just staring at my, into my computer screen for so long isn't really ideal. I prefer doing my work handwritten. So if teachers could give handwritten work during the, you know, the-
Hybrid?
Yeah, yeah. The student independent work time, that could, you know, how they used to give homework in person. Like, before we went on to quarantine and were released from school, my chemistry teacher gave me a bunch of packets, hard copy packets, so that I could do my work for the next couple of weeks' worth with my pencil instead of on my laptop. But I think that if, since grades are being counted, there's no state mandates or whatnot saying that you have to let students pass classes, then I think that students will actually start trying during their independent work time as opposed to just taking the time off as they did in the spring. I think that'll help somewhat. Obviously, things weren't great back in the spring. A lot of classes were really easy to just tread your way through and get a good grade. But I think that if students start doing their homework in the work time and attend virtual office hours, that it kind of gives them incentive to do it if grades are actually being counted. So I think that will help. And I hope that we're able to pursue an in-person school day, but I understand that we might have to go full remote.
Michael?
Yeah, so with, when I was, during the spring, when I was online, I think the only time I did Zoom meetings was for physics and math, and that was for just help. So I didn't have any Zoom meetings, as said before. And I think that if we don't have any of that face-to-face learning, even online, it's just not going to be as efficient. And I'm going to, and most of my time is going to be spent just doing online modules or some type of online work that I don't think I'll learn much on. And the material that I learned for like AP classes, let's say, I feel like all of that was before the pandemic. During the pandemic, there was a lot less work given, and I don't think that prepared me enough for some AP classes. That was just from my classes. With the online learning, I think it's about the same amount of time if we're doing hybrid because of the split in alphabetical. And I don't, I don't see a problem with that either. For the independent work time as well, I think that that's important since we're going to be at home and we're not going to be in class. Because in class, you would have that extra time to speak or collaborate with your peers. But online, it's a lot different because of, even interruptions in internet can cause a lot of things to go wrong, like disconnecting and connecting. And I, and I think that just having that work time is really going to help.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I comment?
Go ahead, Lilly, you have one more thing.
Yeah, okay. So first of all, I think that it's really important for labs to be in person. As you can see, a lot of college students are actually going back, but most of their classes will be online. But what they're going back for is more of the STEM classes with the labs, like biology and whatnot, so that they can get that hands-on lab experience. That is really crucial. And that's really important for a lot of the science classes at RB. And I think that a schedule, a schedule will definitely just help every- And I think that a schedule, a schedule will definitely just help everything. Because a lot of my teachers, I actually think all of my teachers did Zooms during spring on a scheduled basis. Like, I would have two APUS history Zooms a week, two chemistry Zooms a week at scheduled times. But it was different for every teacher, so I can't, you know, say that's for everybody. But I think that the schedule definitely helped when it had that. And, yeah.
Okay, let's keep moving real quick. Next is the, the Apex portion. So I want to just touch on briefly, I know this has drawn a lot of attention. On July 23rd, the governor came out and said, parents, school districts need to offer a, whatever their primary model would be, but also a fully remote model if students or families requested it. And we were pretty much as a committee, close to being, finalizing with our remote and our hybrid plan, and actually talking about if we would want to release it sooner. And then that direction came out. And so that was within two weeks of our August 3rd deadline. And so we, we went around as a committee and were discussing and trying to figure out what would be a way so that teachers wouldn't have to be, so we actually came, we're trying to figure out a way where teachers wouldn't have to manage two plans at the same time. And so it was brought up in the committee that we had used Apex. And that's where I told them that, I saw something similar with the school in the western suburbs that was, for any parent that wanted to do fully remote, they were allowing students to do an online, like Illinois Virtual High School or Edge Annuity. And so we have an Apex coordinator on staff, and that's why, how we landed on the Apex. Now, that was not vetted as thoroughly as these hybrid models and remote models, but again, it was because we were trying to adhere to the governor's mandate and to the short amount of time before we opened school. So it was suggested by Mr. Bonarigo, and I believe another teacher on the committee in our second meeting, that maybe we should be reaching out to the people that have selected Apex. And if they feel comfortable with their student being able to do the hybrid model but not attend the in-person instruction, but then use that almost like a makeup day, like if they were, just like a regular school day, when they were absent, they would be responsible for getting those assignments from the teacher, working on the makeup work, using the virtual office hours to then address, have some teacher interaction time, to then address the things that they missed on the in-person learning. And so that's where we originally were when we came up with this hybrid model, because we knew there would be some families that had emailed us and said they don't want to come back on campus until there's a vaccine. And then we have some other families that were adamant that they wanted, you know, back to, back to normal, full instructions. So we were trying to meet in the halfway, in the middle with everybody to try to come up with some type of solution that would appease everyone. And so the, the late mandate from the governor on July 23rd did throw us a curveball, and that's why we ended up falling, like kind of deferring to this Apex model. We understand it's not, it was never the committee's intent to do that. We also understand that it's not an RB teacher, although you have, you will have an RB staff member who serves as the Apex coordinator and can provide help. You still have access to your counselor, your social worker, all the extracurriculars that'll be running at the school. That was like for those parents that were set on, hey, we, we just want to do a fully remote model for first semester until the overall management of the pandemic around the country becomes more clear. And even when reaching out to the families on Apex, we've only had about 33 switch over. We still have roughly 100 that just want to do fully remote or fully Apex. So we have reached out to those families. We still have about 1,030 roughly that have chosen the hybrid. And we have the 33 families that said they're going to try the hybrid but not do the in-person. And then we still have roughly 100, 110 that are still aligned with the Apex model.
Dr. Skankis, I think we should also mention though, that the Apex model is not a lesser model. We've used it many times for credit recovery. It might not be our teachers, but it's definitely curriculum taught by other educators, different teachers. So this is still quality education. So it's not a lesser option, it's a different option. I think, Kristen, you've used it often for the credit recovery.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the reasons there is a misconception about Apex is because it has been used for credit recovery at RB. And in using it in credit recovery, we structure that differently. You know, if students can test out of module, they can test out of units, if they show proficiency in credit recovery, they need to meet a 60%, mastery in order to move on. And that would not be the case if you selected Apex for the, for the remote option. You would take all of them, you would take all of the units and you would get the grade that you earned. And so students would, would have to take modules over again if they had a 60%. If they wanted to get a better grade in the class than a 60%, students would go through the entire course. So I understand why there's maybe a misconception about Apex, because we have used it for credit recovery and structured that differently in the past. In the remote option, you know, we plan to structure that differently so that students do have a full, robust experience in Apex. And there are many courses that we don't use in credit recovery that we would use in the remote option, several AP classes and several other rigorous courses as well.
Yeah, so these are all accredited classes by credentialed educators?
Yeah, and I think, you know, the teachers, one of the teachers that came up to speak tonight, you know, he hit the nail on the head when he said, the teachers understand that the best type of instruction is students being back on campus. But right now, we're not sure if we can manage that 100% because of the pandemic. We know as an administration that Apex is not the best option, but we had to provide an option for parents that don't feel safe of coming on campus.
Right.
And then there were some concerns like, well, I don't know if three days is enough for my student, and that's a lot of independent work. We feel that we might just want to stay with the Apex model. So I mean, we're really trying to appease the people that want to come to school, the people that want to be online, people that want to have both. So it's, it's a lot of moving pieces, that's why it's a very fluid situation. Kylie, Hector, anything on the Apex piece before I move on? Okay, almost done folks, I promise. The remote learning, obviously you saw the plan. This has to be our fallback plan because at any time, we could end up having to go to remote learning. The reason that we had talked about putting out the orientation week and starting in the hybrid model is we feel that any, at the time, the committee had felt that any type of in-person instruction that could occur between students and teachers to build relationships, build routines, get into some type of routine, would help those students whenever we had to flip to remote. Somebody else mentioned this tonight, that the cold and flu season is expected to be worse now under the pandemic. We have heard the same thing. And so we know that possibly during the cold and flu season, if we're going to be remote, we think students would be, have, be more successful in remote if they had some, a few weeks of in-person instruction under the hybrid model. And so that's why we were originally at the hybrid model. Obviously, with all the schools choosing to close in the last two weeks, I think that's what's caused some discord, you know, and some concerns from our staff, like why we're one of the only schools still left trying this. But again, because we're a small school, we don't have busing, we're very flexible, we're, we've been a one-to-one school now for over five years. I think we have some things in our favor. We have great, great staff here, I think there's some things that we could do to pull off this hybrid model. All that being said, there are some things that are out of anybody on the committee's control, the teacher's control, and we have to manage these four variables on a regular basis. There was an article today in The Landmark about the increase in cases in Riverside. So obviously, we're watching that very closely. So at any time there was outbreak of cases or consistent increase in cases in Brookfield, Riverside, North Riverside, or in our feeder patterns, we would have to consider going remote. At any time, if the governor, state board of education, IDPH, Cook County Health Department came out and had concerns with our areas or concerns in schools in general and went back to phase three, we would be going back to remote. Staffing issues. So we've talked with our faculty about, even if we have, even if we're on remote, we want teachers on campus, teaching from the school, so there's not those internet problems. And that teachers can demonstrate labs and have full access to all the resources in their classroom. And we have received a lot of teachers that have picked up paperwork about having to take leave of absences due to childcare needs and some other issues. So, I mean, at some point, we have to, we're, we're working with, to try to accommodate some of those requests, but at the same time, toe the line of, we really want you on campus, even if we're in a remote model, educating our students so it's a better experience for our students. Now, the only, the fourth variable that would force us to go to fully remote if we started this hybrid model, and that's the board's decision, is if it's an unmanageable process. And I know this raised some concerns from the teachers when I met with them about, well, what do you mean it's an unmanageable process? The committee put together, if you can't guarantee it's safe, we shouldn't be doing it. I don't know anybody that can guarantee anything right now during the global pandemic. We had this conversation again, I met with the union again this morning. I, I think we have all the safety procedures, as you heard from the one parent, an email that Ms. Dixon read, that, you know, we're encouraging social distancing, wearing of masks, hand washing, putting hand sanitizer, increasing our cleaning schedule, reducing the number of students in the building, eliminating lunch periods, grab-and-go lunches. We're taking all the necessary steps that were recommended, but I can't sit here as your superintendent and guarantee you, like, did we miss something? Is there a chance that a kid could test positive and could come into our school? I think that same thing happens when you go into Walgreens, when you go into a gas station, wherever you go today. You don't know who you're around or what they, who they've been in contact with. And so I, I can't sit here and tell you that it's a perfect and it's a guarantee that no one's going to get sick or that we're not going to have any problems. And I wanted to make sure I said that because that was a concern that was very clear from my teaching staff or from the teaching staff in the district. And that's why we put that orientation week in place. Because again, I don't want to sound repetitive, but if we can't operate with 200 kids at a time in the building, and we think there's some things that need to be readdressed, we can default to that remote model and revisit the hybrid plan, or revisit the timing of the hybrid plan and then reinstitute it. So those would be the, the main variables used if we were to decide to go into remote learning. The other, go ahead.
For me as a board member, and that last point, it's hard for me as a board member to wrap my mind around that. Because some of us who are working as essential workers, you know, during the, during the night, I work at UPS, there's a thousand of us going to work every shift, four shifts a day, seven days a week. We get a temperature scanned, they put the safety features, there's masks. And every teacher, every family here is ordering packages, and we are working like it's Christmas around the clock. And I come home and sleep three hours and then I go to Jewel. And the girl behind the checker is making $14 an hour with her shield, and she's going in every day, and people are now falling like flies at the grocery store. People are not coming, you don't see the grocery store workers sick, and I'll tell you, there's 300-plus workers at that grocery store, making sure that every family here who's buying food at Costco or Jewel or any other grocery store is, got their table covered. And then you've got your policemen, you've got thousands of essential workers following the state-recommended safety pattern so that the families here live. And this school has gone backwards. They fixed the HVAC, we've got the cleaning, we're reducing this, we're doing everything we can as every other organization with essential workers. So I think, you know, as a board member, I start to think, as a Teamster, I'm a Teamster, and if I tell UPS, I don't want to go in, they'll say, you're fired and the union won't support me. Because UPS said, we've done everything, we followed all protocol, if you don't want to work, you, you don't have a job. And I firmly believe that as long as we follow the state-recommended, all the recommendations from everybody that's poured in here, I don't think we're creating a threat for anybody. And we've been told by experts in this country, we have to learn to live. And I see families in Brookfield, the restaurants are full, the grocery stores are full, Costco's full, people are going out, the park is full. People are living a hybrid model. So to think that school is going to be different, I don't understand that. So as a board member, I fully believe that as long as we're monitoring and following and following all the protocol, we have to move forward.
We, we have just a few more things to touch on, I'll, I'll be very brief. Kevin Baldus is our interim director of special education. Kevin is here tonight. Kevin, do you have anything you want to address with special ed parents, because that has been a concern?
I would love to hear more about...
Especially how an IEP student would even get their services under the remote model.
Yes, I would love to hear about that. And if, I don't know if you are able to, or maybe one of the two of you, and how are we meeting the needs? Because the ISB guidelines, the two groups that are of most concern are diverse learners and then our EL population. So I'd love to hear about both of those populations and meeting their needs during this time.
Well, I'd start with explaining the, the structure of special ed underneath different other, different models. We're to go hybrid, within the populations that we have within our special ed group, I would say that the recommendation is that kids that are within our transition program, core multi-needs, and others, to be determined by case managers, would fall into a four-day-a-week schedule. AM, no alpha split with those kids. Looking at that, those numbers in those classrooms to be located in a certain section of our building, they are, the largest class, the size that we'd have at that point with that population in the core, multi-needs would be 13. This would allow those kids to get those essential services that they need that are aligned in their IEPs. Of course, it's not a perfect model, but it's one that many of these kids require us to be in pro, sometimes close proximity to, to working with them on daily living skills that they've been missing in being at home. Within, also within, it gives them an opportunity to relieve, get their related services, the speech, social work, OTPT, the vision and, or itinerance and audio itinerance that many of these kids need to have within their IEPs to grow, learn, and hopefully be successful.
Well, we're under, we're on, that's the law.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Right? That's the law, to meet those minutes on their IEP. If we don't, we're breaking the law.
Under this given world that we're living in, the answer to that is yes and no. At the end of last year, many school districts required their case managers, under the guidance of, with Lancy and, and our director, to create distance learning plans, which were basically addendums that were created to go along with the IEPs to show families how, given the state home order, that how those services would be met, how they plan on successfully implementing different services that the kids require through their IEPs. The remote option, then, we flip over to, let me finish, the afternoons, those kids would still be doing things after they, many of those kids also have ones that need food, to be honest. They need to come to school to, to get, you know, some of them are on reduced and free lunches, and to get that food to go back home. I was really surprised last year about how well a lot of those kids did in some of the virtual settings that the teachers and case managers created. Some really neat videos and activities of them that stayed home for like PE and things like that. The teachers got really creative with that. And I like to say that my, our case managers and teachers in my department are really creative in the things that they're doing. The next thing would be if we were to go remote. I've had many conversations with certain parents with kids within, in that population, that the Apex isn't going to be appropriate for them. It's meant to be done at a level that is a Gen Ed setting. Many of those kids are doing, aren't able to access that type of curriculum. So giving them the option to still attend school, those morning sessions, given remote, again, then they can provide those, those related services as well. I've had conversations with union rep about that, how our teachers feel about doing that, and, and they, they support that, that decision as well. And then the other option, and if we go to remote, the other option then is, if it's a stay-home order by the governor, then that's kind of like, our hands are tied and those distance learning plans are then implemented. There's another whole section, a group of kids that also fall underneath our umbrella, and there are kids that have specific learning disabilities that are typically in all Gen Ed classes in a co-taught setting, and sometimes have supportive classes like a study skills where they're working on transition goals that they have within their IEPs, and also working on relearning strategies, doing just a lot of different supplemental activities to help keep them up in the area of, for example, maybe they have a math reasoning deficit. I think that those opportunities... I think that those opportunities for those kids will be met through the co-teaching model. I know that Kylie and I have had conversations with our co-teaching groups about some PD and talking about during our Thursday and Friday about how can we make Zoom look and be effective in a co-teaching model, break out groups within classes and then, and just get more bang for our buck for those two people in that room with those kids and breaking them out, so we can make sure we meet those IEP needs and minutes through that child's IEP.
Is our number of students who have like severe medical needs, ports, feeding tubes, multiple underlying health conditions, is that number lower than 10?
Yes. So right now, there's a couple of kids that we've already worked with the families that are, because of their being medically fragile, are going to be on homebound services. And allow them to still access those virtual sessions as much as they possibly can, but just because of their medical condition, it is very, very unsafe for them to even have some types of option to contract anything.
So we're working with those families to make sure their needs are being met?
And I commend my case managers of that communication that they're doing. We had a meeting on Friday morning and I kind of went through everything I'm telling you with them, and they ready to meet that challenge. And they're already communicating with families.
And I just wanted to add, and KB Short tenure, you're doing a fantastic job as an interim director of special education, you know. And hearing about your meetings and a meeting with you personally, I know you've demonstrated your commitment to meet all of our IEP students' needs. And if we have to come an extra day to school, we will. You know, we will do whatever it takes, not only to service them, but to service them right, the same goes for English language learners.
Any other questions for special ed? The last thing I'd like to bring is Dave up, Dave Mannan and Beth for social, emotional, and safety. That should cover pretty much the summary of the components. Wes and I did just convene a little bit here to decide that we could shorten the agenda a little bit tonight to focus more on this, because I'm sure you're going to have some more questions and want to have more depth discussion.
You don't want me to hear the one?
So maybe if we let them cover safety and the social, emotional learning, I can conclude with the portion of the plan. We can take a short break and then we can reconvene for some more discussion. Dave, do you want to touch on the, well, let me, while we're still on the curriculum and the student piece, Beth, student, assistant principals for student services, social, emotional. I mean, we've heard it from students tonight, we've got a lot of emails from parents, we even talked with the staff, like even if we do go hybrid, we have to really focus on the social, emotional in the first two weeks, just to rebuild those relationships. What's the plan from the student services office in regards to counselors, social workers?
Well, our hope is that when students are here for in-person instruction, that they take advantage of that, so we're going to really try and keep them in class and find other ways to connect with students if they need to see their counselor or their social worker, being creative in seeing them after their class time or taking them from a study hall or academic support, so they're not missing out on that in-person instruction. I think that we are going to put together videos, especially for our freshmen and our transfer students who have not met their counselor, and push those out so that they can connect a name with a face. We'll be creative in coming up with ways to meet with our freshmen in small groups. Hopefully, some of our teachers will allow us to take some class time, maybe PE time, and maybe we can push into PE and do some small group lessons during PE classes, finding unique spaces where we can spread out. Seniors are definitely on our minds and how we're going to support them through the college application process, how we can share information with them so that they can feel supported. And all of that is connected to social, emotional, right? The anxiety of, what's my next step? How am I going to be supported? Looking at college reps, obviously, they won't be coming into the building, so we're having to be creative in how we can come up with opportunities for our seniors to connect with our college reps. Our social workers, counselors, school psychs, I think did a very good job last semester, last quarter with, given what we had. I think now we're more prepared to have scheduled Zoom meetings with our students, especially the social workers, and making sure that parents know to reach out to us and who to reach out to if they have concerns with their students at home. Maybe sending out a list of things to look for in their students and making sure that we're providing the social, emotional, mental help and support that they might be need as we go into the school year. We have lots of resources with NAMI pillars. The support is there, it's just making sure that we know where those, who those students are and making sure that they're reaching out to us when they need us.
And we hired the third, we have three full-time social workers now.
So we have three full-time social workers, five full-time counselors, and a part-time counselor. We have a social work intern, a counseling intern, two full-time school psychologists and an intern. And, I mean, our interns are great because we can really utilize them to do, you know, kind of check in on students that maybe need something that's more consistent, even on a daily basis at first. And we know who our students are that maybe struggled in the end, and that's, those are our students that we'll reach out to right at the beginning of the year. What do you need from us? How can we help you? How can we best support you as we kick off the school year? Whether we're, whenever we're hybrid, remote, as we're fluid throughout the semester, we will do all we can to be supportive and try to keep things as normal as possible. We're used to doing group guidance lessons on a consistent basis with each of our grade levels, so it's just coming up with unique ways to do that while not interrupting the learning time that they have with their teachers.
Here's a fast question. Because we know that we may have some students who struggle who ordinarily wouldn't-
Yes.
-and our social workers can't be everywhere, is there any PD that will happen for our teachers, maybe on additional look fours, things that they should maybe be paying attention to as they're on with students? Because I've heard from several students today, right, about being depressed, being lonely. I mean, some of our students who maybe never struggle are going to struggle.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I think we need our parents to be aware of that, because I don't even know how much teachers will connect, you know, and especially too with these masks on, right? Like, you're not reading a person like you'd be reading them if they weren't wearing a mask. So I think it's, do we see a pattern in students not engaging when they normally would? Or students who typically have been strong students and now we're not seeing that? And again, you know, parents, they're, some of them are struggling with some of their own social, emotional concerns. So I think all we can do is continue to push out resources and, you know, to the point of maybe it being too much, where social workers are building, adding resources to our website. But yeah, I know what you're saying about a training, I don't know, it's something I can look into and see what we can do to maybe arm our teachers a little bit better so that, and so that they know as well that, if you're concerned at all, reach out to student services and we'll follow up.
I think Wes Forty does some trauma-informed practice training, right? Wouldn't that be something on that?
We actually, as a staff, went through that in August of 2018. All the administrators, psychs, social workers, counselors, deans, we all went through that training and were certified.
Nice.
And so that, I know they're offering, there's other trainings that are being offered.
Sure.
And so maybe it would be, maybe it's something-
So.
Maybe it's something that we, the social workers and the psychs can almost be like a trainee.
Sure, so could you like train the trainer, right?
Yeah. Like, there are trainers at some level, and we could certainly offer some of our own PD, you know, create something for our teachers.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking, kids who need the resources don't always reach out for the resources. So it's sometimes on the adults to be able to recognize that something might be up.
And you know, actually, our students are so great as well. I can't tell you the number of times a student will come into student services concerned about a friend, concerned that they're not themselves, they're making comments that don't seem right. So that's something else that I think we need to really instill in our students is that, you know, we need to take care of each other, and if you're concerned, reach out.
And I did want to add as well, you know, many of our teachers do an excellent job in emailing us and emailing student services with their concerns, so many of our teachers are taking, you know, that step and reaching out to us for help. So I do want to commend many of our staff for doing the trauma-informed care that we were prepared for and involving us, the administration, social workers, and counselors.
So I think one related question or comment, it's probably more for Kristen, is also the support then for our teachers. I mean, we have an EAP program. It's probably, I know from my professional life, you know, supporting staff in all of what's going on in our world is very challenging and making sure that people know that resources, not just for the students, right, or the families, but also our staff and teachers, that might be something to make sure we're putting front and center of benefits information.
Yes, absolutely. We also have monthly newsletters that we push out that often cover a lot of those topics as well. So we'll continue to do that.
Dave, the last piece is safety, and this is a big concern, obviously. There's a lot of moving pieces here. You just want to touch on briefly, I know the parents have seen in the weekly communications, masks will be required at all times, temperature scans, hand sanitizer, all that. Could you just go through that list real quickly?
Sure, yeah, and, you know, before, I just get to the list really quick. I'm glad that you guys, you know, the board has added resources in this office and her office and our office, together with student affairs office, working side by side in assisting students that have some social, emotional related things going on. And, you know, in our handbook, you'll see on the back cover, the first thing is a QR code about, you know, what concern you have, you know, and so we're really cognizant of that this year. We also want to provide more, you know, resources for our teachers and our toolkit. And so we purchased through a title grant, the Remind app, and we expanded that app. So now that teachers, when they log into the program, they can see their classes, who's in their class, and then reach out to those students through their Remind, which basically will link up, like if Michael has a text, a phone, you know, a stream of texts that comes through Remind, and you can link up your related school resources for that student as well. So there's a lot of things that, you know, we see in our office that we say, okay, it's sanitation, it's face masks, social distancing, but it goes, safety goes way beyond that and that's always in our brain too. And so, you know, we will continue to work. We have been over the summer as well, monitoring our Go Guardian and Bark systems for students that are maybe looking at things they shouldn't and providing resources for them as well. As far as a return to school, what that looks like, I'm glad that we've had a couple trial runs here. You know, last week, we had a residency event, we were able to socially distance that program out, and I think we had some really positive feedback. And what we've learned is, you know, when spaced out, and so what we did is we walked the building, we were able to mark our hallways and our stair walls in directional ways. So there's going to be one-way stair walls going up, one-way stair walls going down. And as far as the hallway traffic, we're going to stagger our dismissal times, we're going to stagger the end of the daytime as well. So we know that once we distance students and distance our population in this building, we're going to have good results in taking care of the safety aspect as far as the contamination and contact with others. As far as students coming into the building, let me walk you through that. We have purchased a couple of these iPad sensors that are contactless. So when students walk in, you probably saw on the sandwich boards this afternoon or when you came in this evening, there'll be a questionnaire with COVID symptoms on there. We're asking parents to self-certify their students at home to ask those same questions. Do you have these symptoms? We'll be sending some communication out regarding those symptoms and what that protocol looks like for parents here shortly. But after they self-certify, there's no temperature, there's no sickness, they haven't been in contact with any other students that had a positive rate, they will then come into the building. As they enter our doors, we'll ask them those same questions. Did your parents self-certify? Do you have any of these symptoms? Were you in contact with anyone that has a positive case? If those answers are no, then they proceed in, where we then do the digital infrared scan, which is kind of takes like two seconds, and then that student can proceed into class. What we're asking students to do, there will be a face mask requirement for all of our students and all of our staff, 100% of the time. I know it gets kind of getting used to here as I'm talking too. It's just one of those things, it's our new norm, you know, to provide safety for our students and our staff. What we're asking our students to additionally do is we have lanyards and we were fortunate enough to give almost every one of our students an ID that walked through our building last week. We're going to scan that ID as well, right after we ask those questions, and that will then certify them that they're in the building, that they're safe. So it's kind of a three-step process. Once they're in the building, they're good to go, and we ask our students to go directly to their class. So arrival times, even though our doors will be open around 7:15-ish, we're really asking our students to be here around 7:35, 7:40, so that they're not, there's not time for them to group up in our hallways, in our common areas, and so on and so forth. Regarding breakfast and lunch, there will be options available, however, it is a grab and go, and there's no, we're not going to allow space and or time for students to really eat in like a cafeteria, a large setting. You know, if they want to take that, go outside, eat real quick, come back in, or an area that we define later, that's socially distance appropriate, we can do that, but there will be options for that as well. Again, we'll define all these protocols and procedures in a letter here that we have ready to go. But in addition to that, the classrooms are spaced out. Some teachers have asked for additional PPE, such as like face shields and different dividers, you know, provide those, and I know Kristen's been working through the staff with those. And then also sanitation is going to be, you know, one-on-one, you know, we have to get that done. And so, you know, we're going to have to come up with some protocols for staff in regards to students wiping their areas down. We do have buckets and sanitation and all the other requirements that are guided from ISB's return to school, ready to go. So it's a lot. Again, like Dr. Skinkis said, it's very fluid, and I think every day we learn something more. We're asking students as they come in to use door A and door G, those will be two access points, and then we'll have those stationed on for direction.
I have two quick questions. There was a mention made in the visitor's comments about a certain type of mask that is apparently not. Do we have a policy in place that says that certain masks would be deemed not acceptable? And then can we provide one to not send them home?
Thank you for the question. So Kristen applied through the state to receive a mask, a cloth mask for every single student that comes in. So on their first day, students will receive that orientation week, will receive a cloth mask and a lanyard. As far as our, what our protocols will be, we're asking that those masks cover those, the face, the nose, insides. And so whatever that face covering may be, you know, appropriate as deemed by our dress code, that's acceptable.
Okay. And one quick other question. This came, you know, I think the RBA shared a couple of comments that were submitted by various teachers. And one comment specifically mentioned the six-foot social distancing of desks, and there was reference to something along the lines of, you know, the large majority is there, but there are some cases that that's not, that, where we don't have six feet. And I know this from our own, you know, in our office and so forth, that, can that be addressed? Because I think that's a legitimate concern.
Legitimate concern is something that we were just talking about with our facilities manager and Kylie. There are, there is a small percentage of classrooms that still need to be worked out. So whether that's removing additional furniture to provide more space or looking how we can utilize the classroom setup a little bit more is something that we'll do within a nice couple of days before we get going here. But that's definitely on the forefront.
Thank you.
We're doing the best we can to get to the six-foot, but in the state guidelines from the Illinois Department of Public Health and the State Board of Education, it says when possible, because they understood, that's why they wanted, one of the recommendations they gave is having students set up in rows, correct, Kristen?
Rows all facing the same direction, yes.
All facing the same direction, if you could, social distance to six feet.
Do we have any ability to move certain classes outside to the football stadium?
Absolutely.
I mean, can teachers be creative on this and say, "Let's take science outside"?
We already have some teachers that go to the front of the school when they're doing an English unit, or we have teachers that take kids outside already, so we can encourage that as well.
I think that would be a very good thing to encourage.
We've talked about, do we look into tents? You know, so that if there was, if there was some inclement weather, teachers could still be outside under a tent. We've talked about that.
If I could also add two things, I think it's important to note that every period while students are in a classroom, our buildings and grounds through Joel and our airmark staff will be cleaning every period, the bathroom door handles, toilet seats, soap dispensers. We've installed touchless faucets in every single bathroom. Drinking fountains will be sanitized, even though we're only allowing the water bottle fill stations, any benches, handrails, anything that's a common touch- Any benches, handrails, anything that's a common touch point throughout the entire building will be sanitized every single period while students are in class. So I think that's really, um, and that's something that's really important, door entry handles, um, just to limit, uh, while we're certainly encouraging students to wash their hands and use hand sanitizer, just another added layer of protection. Um, and then also in regards to our HVAC units, um, we have been running them earlier and can plan on continuing to do so, so that we change over the air before anyone enters the building. Um, and then in addition to that, um, we're increasing the number of air changes throughout the entire day, so that we're including more outside air cycling through. Um, and then it's important to note that our HVAC units have three filters, two by the main unit, and then one filter, uh, at the entry point of every single classroom. Um, and so I think that is incredibly important to mention. In addition to that, teachers can also have their windows open if they have a classroom with windows, uh, as well as their door to, uh, eliminate that extra touch point, um, and circulate some air as well.
Can I just ask, if it turns out that there's bottlenecks coming in in the building, could we have more than two entrances available? Or will more staff be available to just help out? I mean, I've worked in a school for many years and, right, like that mad rap, rush through the door, and then having to stop and ask questions, like, I would just imagine there being a bottleneck.
Yeah, so there's, although there's two entryways, there's actually three, going to be three stations between those two. And then the distance that we separate, I don't know if you came in this morning, but there's probably a good, I don't know, 20 feet or so from the door to the kiosk, where that's going to be stationed at, at our main entrance. And then at door G, we'll have, uh, similar setup. If we could get another kiosk in time, we'll have two stations there as well. Um, and so I, I don't foresee a, a large backup. Obviously, when you run a new program, you'll have to see how that goes. But we're going to do our best to social distance and make sure that happens. And then that, that first orientation week is going to be a good test, limits test to see how this goes. Uh, right now, we're doing the infrared guns, but, you know, when it comes to a kiosk, uh, that might be a little bit of a different ballgame, so we'll have to see how that goes. And those are planned to be here, um, I think tomorrow, so.
How many kids have been here for summer sports camp? Because that was also a test, right?
We had 16 summer sport camps with 550 student athletes and 70 coaches.
Okay.
For the month of July, we had a successful.
A significant portion of the population.
Correct.
Yes.
As well as a driver's ed program that Dr. Freitas mentioned in one of his messages to families.
Guys, I did also want to add that of the 92 classrooms we have here, 82 classrooms have been staged for social distancing, with the exception of 10. So our director of maintenance and his staff and Kristen have done an excellent job in staging the classrooms for social distancing. There are some classrooms that are tricky, you know, kind of like the auto shop, right, the carpentry room, like, what do we exactly do there, but we're working at it. Where our maintenance team and Kristen are doing a great job in addressing that need.
So this third entrance is just for the teachers?
Third entrance would be queue off the side of the building, so the teachers would have to come in the same way as the students. There'd be a temperature station at that as well.
Are they, uh, so how are the self-certifying, um, the, the morning self-certify, is it going out through Remind, is it going out through Schoology?
So it's not a program that we're going to use on the parents' end. We're asking parents to just orally talk through that process with their student.
Okay.
And then we'll electronically code that we had that conversation and that they had that conversation with their parents through HERO, our HERO program, which we use for our tardies.
Okay.
And that's a simple scan of the ID.
Right.
So it's self-certify, HERO scan, infrared scan.
And then the staff?
Staff will go through the same process. Um, we're asking staff to use the lanyards, um, and IDs, just for visibility and safety, uh, is number one. You know, we want to know who's coming into our building. And so that's why we're asking our students just to wear those as they walk through our doors, same thing with the staff.
Yeah. Most schools do that now anyways, and have for years, right, as a safety precaution?
Correct.
I think Michael had a question.
Yeah, um, so what about students that do come in early before that 7:35, 7:40? Like, where would they be? Like, would you let them in the school, or?
No doubt our teachers are going to want to see, you know, students before, before you're in a hybrid. Um, our, our teachers do a great job of being here early and working with our students. We ask that, you know, obviously, we don't want large groupings, but if there's a situation where they need to, to review before a large exam or assessment, um, and they want to have a group of four, five, whatever, you know, to go through that, that's, you know, that's acceptable. We just want to make sure that students are supervised in an area that's socially distancing appropriately.
Was it earliest when the Agador just went?
So we're going to have information out to parents here shortly, but 7:15 will be the earliest that we're asking. I know in previous years, um, this building and the culture here has been wide open, and so it's going to take a little bit of an adjustment for that. You know, if there's, uh, like a morning practice or something for cross-country, obviously, that's with the coach, and that's something that they can set up. But as far as just students coming into our building, 7:15 will be the earliest, uh, due to the social distancing, um, that we're trying to accomplish here. And then, again, we actually want to push that a little bit back.
Dave, just make note that if we have half the population, student population here, we still may need a place, whether it's the fieldhouse or main gym, somewhere if students are early, somewhere large enough where they can socially distance.
Absolutely.
And gather.
One thing I didn't cover is that we will have an isolation room. Um, you know, we understand that there's going to be a hot read that potentially comes up on our infrared scanners. And if that happens, you know, we're going to escort that student down to our isolation room. Our health office staff will then reassess that student, go over those questions, or self-certify questions again, um, wait for a couple minutes, because we do have a significant amount of students that like, you know, raise their temperature up and that heart rate and that, and that, and that heat index in their body. So, uh, after we go through those assessment protocols in the health and the isolation room, if they're good, then great, go back to class. Uh, we'll send a message home to the parent, letting them know that we had these conversations. Um, if there's associated symptoms, um, our notification protocols will be included in the letter that we send out. Um, and then we'll do contact tracing, um, to follow through with that, uh, if there is, uh, some related symptoms. And then we'll ask students to, you know, self-quarantine, uh, if they have been in contact with someone that has positive, and, you know, we'll ask that student, you know, and their parents suggest highly that they get tested. If there's a positive test, then we'll contact trace back. And then the specific language, again, will be in this letter, but any student that has contact with that individual two days prior to that positive read will also be asked to then self-quarantine.
So I just, I want to remind the audience, right, that we are bound by HIPAA in all of these things, right? So it doesn't become a witch hunt, what family, what kid, what staff member, right? Like, I could be working with all these teachers, and if I haven't come in contact with them in the last two days, but one of them gets it, I might not know, right? Unless they tell me in confidence, that's their business, but, right, I just want people to understand that we are bound by those rules, and we're not just going to be like, so-and-so got, you know, right? It's, if, God forbid, right, I don't even want that to happen at all. It's not why I'm bringing it up. But, right, we have all these rules that we are bound by.
I think it's a good reminder about privacy and confidentiality and social media and, and, and some of this communication, I think, needs to stress that.
Right.
That, that these are private matters. I think it's, it may not rise to level HIPAA in some cases, but yeah, I.
It's a great point you brought up about social media, something we talked about with Mr. Mannan with Lane, our school liaison officer, uh, school liaison officer, was that if a student does have a hot thermo scan, you know, they're going to have another process where they go to the nurse and then they get re-scanned. They might be fine, but the way social media has worked in the past at RB, like, that could spread rather quickly and be a, a big, big story about nothing. So, I mean, that is a concern about us, and I think the board wants to make sure we communicate that very clearly.
Absolutely. And the COVID protocols right now are like top on our news and events, um, and under the COVID tab, uh, COVID tab on our, on our website. And then we'll be sending an associated document out that'll walk parents through the process that I just laid out for you today.
Well, and I think there's, sorry, one more kind of editorial comment. That what I have found in, in my workplace is that we've had very few people ultimately show up and test hot, because they're, they're told, if you're not feeling well, stay home. This applies to, to staff, to faculty, to teachers, to students. Don't just take an Advil and, you know.
Hope for the best.
Hope for the best. Truly stay home. And I think changing that culture a little bit with some students who've been driven for perfect attendance, or, you know, staff who never wants to miss a day of work, it's okay to miss a day if you're not feeling well. Don't, don't risk it. And that's a bit of a culture shift, I think, in this, this whole world we're living in.
Yeah, specifically to school, with several students, a high percentage taking AP courses, and they don't want to miss. Um, and talking, in talking with our nurse, Ms. Conway, that's the exact example that she provided, was literally, if you, if you have any symptoms that, you know, may be related to COVID, stay home, you know? Monitor your symptoms, don't come to school, uh, don't put any other student or staff in, you know, in jeopardy of, you know, being, getting sick. Take care of yourself, and then let us know. Call our attendance line, and that number will be, again, um, laid out in the letter. But call our attendance line, please stay home. Thank you for that point.
Yeah, I think that message has to be reiterated again and again and again and again, because I think parents, well, my hope is that they would not send their students sick, but with only having, for each period, you only see a teacher live if we do hybrid twice. And I think some may be inclined to want to give their kids Tylenol and send them to school. So I think we really have to message that very carefully. And when a, and when a student is sick, or when they're exposed and they miss 10 days, you know, how do they make up that work? Right? Like, that's a concern. We don't want them to have to worry about that and come to school sick. We have to find a way to make sure those kids that stay home are getting what they need.
So I wanted to cover some, something, so that, because we heard a lot from, you know, from the teachers about how they were, we weren't, you know, in their best interest in taking care of them healthy-wise.
Can you speak up a little bit?
And that concerns me, um, because I think we do listen. So there, there was a number of teachers on this committee, correct, that developed both these plans?
Correct.
Seven?
Correct.
Four were union leadership.
Correct.
There was a number of coaches in summer camps this year. Are they also, I'm assuming, in the union and teachers?
Yes.
And that was, they weren't afraid to come to school, were they? Or to come to, to say, come to coaching? So if, the fear of, I think this one person said it, and I, I've got to quote it, "Taking the risk, starting in person, anyone getting sick or dying is on you." I suppose he means me or you, Kevin. I, I take that personally. You'll have to live with that for the rest of your life. The staff will never forgive you and will hate you forever. I, I'm, I'm not sure what kind of person writes that, but it's not a very well-educated person. And it really hurt my feelings. I'm not here, I don't want people to hate me. I want to teach our children the best we can. Dave's going out of this, well, you just described to me, it's harder to get into school than it is to get into, you know, the airplane where I work. It's, you know, to your point, I go, I go to work, I'm an essential worker, and I go to Colorado, and I go to Virginia, and I go to Alabama, because that's my job. And I don't have much choice, because I have a mortgage, and I pay taxes here in this, in this district. And that's painful to read these things. Well, we're doing every effort we can. If the teachers say that they are so afraid to come to work, what do we do with sports? How can we reasonably do cross-country if they can't even come to work in the school building? I, I just, we have to do better for the kids. And I think this hybrid model is going to work, and I think it's the best option we have. Do I want to have the kids sit here every day? Yes, I do, but that's not an option. I get it. This is, we, we, we have a committee, well-represented, with the teachers, with the administration, with the stakeholders of the community. We're here as the community, I think, where we cross-reference this community at the best we have. We have Riverside, Brookfield, North Riverside. I know you don't want to call it Hollywood, but even Hollywood represents.
It's a part of Brookfield!
It's a part of Brookfield. But, you know, and, and I think we're doing what the community wants, to open the school in person the best that we can, the safest way we can. So.
And if I could just add, I think, um, and you'd let me know if you agree with me, right? Like, kids want to come to school.
Yeah.
You and your friends.
You heard the students, too.
Right. The students spoke and want to come to school. And if we explain to them the seriousness, if we give them the tools to make good choices, we're not talking about little five-year-olds who, you know, run around and wipe their boogers on each other, right? We're talking about kids who are 13 and up, some kids who are just about to be, right, enfranchised and could, can vote and fight and die for this country, right? So like, the, if we give them the tools that they need to be responsible and to make good choices, I believe they will rise to the occasion. I believe because they want to come to school, they will take it seriously, and they will follow the protocols. I work with kids every day, and when I want the best from them, I empower them. That's just, I mean, I think, right, this plan puts kids in the center, right? And that's what this, that's what a school is, right?
Right. Any other thoughts?
I have to say about that. Oh, Siri was recording that whole thing.
Siri, go ahead.
The union and the board are, the board will take action tonight, but the union and the board have reached a tentative agreement on MO, an MOU for athletics and activities, which a lot of parents have called and questioned now with the shifting of the four seasons of the IHSA, as well as fall play, speech, uh, some of our drama productions. Uh, so they have reached an MOU. We have an MOU that the board will vote on tonight, um, that they agreed upon with the RBA, that would allow clubs and activities to be, both take place, uh, virtually, uh, as well as, uh, in the event, athletics runs, there's a way so that if they're approved by the IDPH, uh, coaches can get their stipends and still provide extracurricular activities for students. Uh, so the board, the union have worked closely to try to make sure there's also those additional extracurricular outlets, whether you're on remote or on the hybrid model, uh, so that you can still have, whether it's virtually or in person, some extracurricular activities to stay engaged, stay engaged to the school environment, your friends, your peers, your coaches, et cetera.
Yep. I heard in the community that some people thought that if they had their child remote, then their child could not participate in extracurriculars. That is not true, correct?
We changed, we, it was up, out in the communication that went out Friday, that students will have access, if they took, if they still want to commit to the Apex Model, counselor, social worker, uh, the Apex Coordinator, as well as access to extracurriculars.
So I, I think that's really important, right? Because we're trying to deliver something to the students. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm a parent of, um, just paid my registration fees, you know, three RB students this year. And, um, so separating my role as a parent from our role on the board, but they, they do tend to merge. And, and we have an obligation collectively to provide the best experience and education for the students in this building. That has to be, I think, driving the, the decision-making here. And, you know, it's, this is not the, the school year I think any of us envisioned, in any way, shape or form. Um, but I think we've talked about extensively in all of our goal-setting discussions, like, what is the RB community? And the RB community certainly is the teachers, and I hear them, and I want to be mindful of what they're saying. Um, and I want to encourage them to use the aspects of their, of their CBAs that I have for sick leave and FMLA and, and accommodations, because those are important HR tools that employees do need to use when they have personal conditions. So I'm not trying to minimize those concerns, but I do believe there are tools to address those concerns. But I also need to hear from the parents, and how many emails have we gotten from parents and from taxpayers and from neighbors? And, you know, we have to balance all of those competing needs here, and that's, that's truly the challenge. And, you know, in my opinion, the, the hybrid gets us there in, certainly not a perfect way, right? But in a way that is flexible, and I think gets us, you know, one week at a time. I think I'm quoting someone here, but that's all we can look for is going one week at a time. So, um, I mean, my, my sincere thanks to everyone on that committee and everyone in this building and everyone who's going to be in this building next week, because it's, it's certainly a team effort and it's a community effort, and it's uncharted territory. So we're doing, I think, collectively the best we can.
So I have a one, maybe two more questions, but one is safety-related.
So I have one, maybe two more questions, but one is safety-related. And it goes back to the, you know, there's four points listed as the factors that could lead us to having to go to remote. And the first factor lists an outbreak or consistent increase in positive cases within districts' primary boundaries. Obviously, we want zero cases. That's clear. But if that day comes, I think it's a legitimate question or, you know, something we really ought to discuss now, is when a case occurs, do we, what sort of the way, I would assume this is evaluated on a case-by-case basis, it could be very different scenarios, depending on how we find out how many people might have been around. But maybe Dr. Skankis or Mr. Mian, can we talk through that a little bit? I'm sure that this is not necessarily prudent to say, like, it is three cases or anything like that. But I do understand the questions of the community and the teachers, because it is a realistic scenario that we could have a case. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Dave, Kristen, feel free to join in. My thought on that is that we would follow the contact tracing protocol that Kristen and Dave referenced. And that if at the time we had a quarantine, even if they, if we had a quarantine of class or a series of classes, I think that would cause an immediate remote, shift to remote. If it was something that we found out about, that a kid tested positive outside of school and the contact tracing did not clearly develop lines back to the school,
Mm-hmm.
I think that would allow us the ability to do the symptom checking and notifying the families where that student may have class and be monitoring symptoms. And I think that's the biggest concern of the staff. Like, they also understand, as you increase the number of people in the building, you're increasing the chances of this happening sooner rather than later. And so, you know, there's two schools of thought. Should we still go through with it and see if we can, you know, manage that or not even attempt it so that we don't even get into that situation? And I understand their concern, and I think that's the concern they really wanted the board to hear tonight, you know, was that they don't want, it's not that they don't want to be around the students, but that's the concern of, like, what if? And I think we've worked close enough with our, with the attorneys on buying their protocols and attending the webinars with the IDPH, the Cook County Health Department, that, I mean, at this point in time, we would have to manage that as it comes through. I mean, I don't, Kristen or Dave, do, I mean, am I touching on that or do you want to add?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's really important to defer to experts in that case, such as, you know, IDPH and Cook County Health Department. The Cook County Health Department of Public Health specifically said, like, there are various factors that go into whether the health department would recommend shutting down an entire school, and it would depend on the specific case. There are so many different potential scenarios. The health department works directly with the specific school to determine what the best option would be. And so they said that we can't definitively say what the recommendation would be because each case would be different. So, you know, as we go through this, it's really important, not only for us to have the data, but for us to share that data with IDPH so that we can then collaborate with the experts who can tell us, based upon our specific scenario, what they recommend, and then we would 100% follow that recommendation. We did that in the spring when we had our basketball team at Hinsdale South. And there was that, you know, concern about someone at Hinsdale South possibly having COVID. The first thing we did that night when we found out was contacted the Illinois Department of Public Health and walked them through, you know, here's when our team was there, here's the information that we have. And then we deferred to what they told us to do. And so we would continue to do the same thing in this situation, too.
Dave, anything?
No, I, you know, just going through protocols with the county health department, you know, and looking for them for advisement on that is what we've done and what we will continue to do.
Sorry, can you repeat that? I can't hear that.
I just said, you know, just taking the advisement of the county health department and then, you know, giving them the case, laying it out, just exactly what Kristen said.
Again, one other question.
Well, it's actually not so much a question. It's more of a statement or a bit of an editorial comment. And, you know, so many things have already been said, but first of all, I would like to thank everyone who spoke tonight for their input, for their feedback. I think it was very thoughtful on the very large majority of them. I think it is important for the teachers to know that we hear them, we hear you, we appreciate the information that was sent just over the last few days. I mean, my experience of this whole discussion was that, you know, there was a summer and we tried to make the best use out of it, and it's a process and it's not perfect by any stretch, but there was clearly a significant uptick in communications just over the, starting Friday, over the weekend, and just now. So it is, I can only speak for myself as a board member, but this is, this entire debate is very clearly, by a factor or factors of 10, the most complex issue that we faced as a board. And so I'm going to vote in favor of the hybrid plan tonight, but I also want everybody to know that this is not a black or white decision. This is not a 90%, it's clear, and what are they talking about, 10%? It's not like that at all. We've heard from experts, from medical doctors tonight that have varying opinions. In my personal estimation, this sort of comes down to, like, I don't know, maybe it's a 48 to 52 decision, but I'm in favor of us trying this, what we've talked about. And so I think it's also important, and it's been said also, that we can take it only a day at a time or a week at a time, but it is important to recognize that the planning doesn't stop. While we will take a formal sort of up or down vote, this isn't the end. And if I can, if I can share one observation, is actually that the strength of this community, when you saw everybody that showed up and actually participated as a parent, citizen, whatever you want to call it, teacher, the quality of that discussion humbles me, because this is the hardest decision that I've taken in my public life, relatively short public life, but nonetheless. So one last comment, tying to this point about quality, I think it's really rather remarkable, the quality discussion that we've witnessed tonight, that was only possible because everybody participated. And so I am greatly encouraged by the collaborative nature and the good faith that has been put in by all the community members. But I would be remiss in not also stating or making a point that I think the board president started to make. And in this last-minute effort and information sharing, there have been a number, not very many, but there have been unfocused, very confrontational, very unfair, and very offensive comments made. I'm not offended. I'm just trying to do my job here. But I take exception to some of the language that has been shared, and when a member of the administration personally gets held or says, "You will be made responsible if something like that happens," that is deeply unfair, and I think it's offensive. And so I would like to use this as a call to reason, a call to participation, a call to faith in each other, we're all in this together. And when people actually, again, 99% of the feedback is incredibly helpful to us. It helps us do a better job. And so that's what I'm greatly encouraged by. But we're better than starting to use this as another thing that divides us. That's the last thing we know, we need, in my opinion, in this community and state and country. And so let's continue working, bring things up to our attention, and we will deal with it. That is my promise. I know I speak on the behalf of the board. That is our promise, to do this on the highest possible level. And so with that, I will be voting in favor of the hybrid plan.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments? Do you want to, because we've got to vote later with the, we just do a straw poll of in favor of the hybrid plan?
Well, do we, can we vote now? I mean, people are waiting for that, right? Resolution?
Do we want to just jump to the?
You can jump to the, I just want to make sure that, I mean, we, you know, the three, I promised the union this morning in that meeting that I would share their three concerns, and that was the uncertainty of implementation. I guarantee that there will be a safety risk. The ability to staff and handle, if there's staffing issues with teacher, people might have childcare or accommodation requests that need to be addressed. So, you know, just their concern about being able to staff the hybrid model if we have a teacher shortage. And then the third piece was just making sure we could logistically do this. And so I wanted to make sure that, I did promise them that I would share those concerns.
I think you did. So let's just go to COVID-19 reopening plan approval resolution, unless there's any question about that. Ramona?
Uh, where are we at?
You want to pass that down?
It's long.
I know, that's why I gave it to you.
I do think you need to make a motion to take something out of order. Don't you?
Yeah, we do.
To amend the agenda?
Yeah, to amend the agenda. Is that what we want to do?
First, take a motion to, uh?
Well, we're, well, regardless, we're amending the, the
Yeah, we're going to amend the agenda here.
Stated agenda anyway, so we might as well roll it all into one motion, right?
Right.
No, we would vote on amending the agenda, and then, once we've said, yes, we agreed to amending it, then we could vote on this or whatever.
When we, I guess my question is, when we say we want to amend it, at that time, are we stating what we're going to take, because we're taking things out, right? So that we're not here to
Well, if you think about the discussion items, I'll touch on FOIA, that should be required, mission statement can be pulled. The reports will be very briefly from myself.
I think you just need to make a motion to take it out of order and defer certain items. You would just defer to the next meeting for certain items.
Take it out of order and defer certain items. Okay, I can do that. Okay, I make a motion that we amend the agenda, take out certain items, and defer others for the next meeting.
Second. Second by Tom Jacobs.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it.
Okay. Here we go. Where the stars, yes. Okay. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of Riverside Brookfield High School, District 208, Cook County, Illinois, as follows, with respect to the opening and operation of the district's offices, facilities, programs, and schools for the 2020, 2021 school year in the midst of COVID-19 pandemic. One, the plan for opening and operation of the district's offices, facilities, programs, and schools for the 2020, 21 school year substantially in the form of, presented by Superintendent and entitled COVID-19 Committee Reopening Plan Hybrid slash Fully Remote and dated August 11, 2020, is hereby approved. The Superintendent and the Superintendent's designees are hereby authorized and directed to implement and enforce the plan and are further authorized to require students, staff, parents, visitors, and other participants in the district's programs to comply with the plan with the directives of the Superintendent and the Superintendent's designees implementing and enforcing the plan. Number three, the Superintendent is hereby authorized to modify the plan from time to time to conform to the requirements of or guidance from any entity with author, authority over the district, including but not limited to the Governor of Illinois, the Illinois Department of Public Health, the Illinois State Board of Education, Illinois High School Association, and the Cook County Health Department, and as otherwise appropriate to facilitate the operations of school and the safety of students, staff, visitors, and other participants in the district's programs. Any substantive changes to the plan shall be made in consultation with the President of the Board and then promptly reported to the Board, which may affirm, modify, or disapprove the changes. The changes shall, however, remain in full force and effect until such time as the Board acts, unless other rights required by law. Number four, this resolution and the plan, as may be modified from time to time pursuant to number three above, are adopted and are to be implemented and enforced in the exercise of the discretionary powers granted to the Board by Sections 10-20 and 10-20.5 of the Illinois School Code and any other applicable law. The plan constitutes rules adopted by the Board pursuant to Sections 10-20.5 of the School Code, which shall be filed in the district's central administrative office and posted on the district's website. In accordance with Board Policy 2:240, the plan and the authorized authority granted to the Superintendent and the Superintendent's designee by the resolution supersede any policy or other rule of the Board to the extent any such policy or rule is inconsistent with the plan. This resolution shall be in full force and effective upon adoption.
Need a second.
Second.
Second by Laura. Okay, Mary Ann.
Mr. Durbin?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Steve Jacobs?
Yes.
Yes, but because there's language that talks about fully remote, I just strongly encourage the administration to take a look back at that remote, fully remote plan after the first quarter, to see if it could be made more robust if data shows it needs to be. But yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Sayles?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, can we take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll take a five-minute break, we're going to discuss the agenda. We'll come back, we do have some things to go through.
I'm scared.
Let's go.
We have freshman registration tomorrow, and so what I'd like to do is get the building administration, excuse the building administration if possible. So I would like to excuse Dr. Freddos, Beth, Kylie, Dave, I don't know if Kevin Baldus is still over there.
He lost.
Lane, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to make sure we're on the same page. So class rank, PE waivers, graduation requirements, curriculum proposals, Kylie, Beth, is that okay to cover at the first meeting in September? Do you need an emergency meeting in August? You're okay?
After this, no. The curriculum guide doesn't get published until the end of October.
Perfect.
Okay, so we have time. Hector, you had talked about with class rank, even if the board does, we're not sure what the action will be, but whatever action it is, it would start with the incoming freshman class.
Correct.
So that this year's senior class wouldn't get the, you know?
They could still achieve the top 10.
Okay. And graduation requirements is something that would be going in that curriculum guide not till October, so I do think we're okay. Hector, if you want to give your principal's report, and then maybe we can, is that where we're at, or do I have to go through some FOIA's first?
Well, we can just jump to the principal's
We already said we're changing it up, so.
Yeah, let's just let him do it.
Okay. Go ahead, Hector, on your principal's report.
Good evening, board members. Here's the principal's report and how we're moving forward at RB. Forward Together is a motto this year, and I want to send a shout-out to Dave Mann and one of my assistant principals, who is the originator of Forward Together. Guys, I know there's fear in the Guys, I know there's fear in the, guys, I know we're afraid of COVID-19 and what can happen to us, right? Okay, and that feeling, it's appropriate for this time. So how can we overcome this fear? Firstly, I want to say to all the community, to all the teachers, all the students, you're not going to be alone in facing this fear, we're going to be together. To the teachers who will be teaching on their new platform with modified curriculum expectations, we're going to give you more time to plan, as you saw in the hybrid plan and fully remote model. Secondly, we're going to implement the recommended safety protocols from the experts. We're doing the temperature screening for everyone, many of us were screened today. We require everyone to self-certify that they are free of any symptoms related to COVID-19. We're going to require face masks, because everyone, as everybody is wearing today. We have reduced class sizes, and we've organized classes to have as much room between the students. We will be conducting extra cleaning in commonly-used areas, and we're creating one-way hallways and finalizing staggered dismissal time. Guys, everyone's safety is a number-one priority. We are taking concrete steps as recommended by the professional experts to keep everyone safe. Many of us have kept our distance, many of us wear masks on a daily basis, and we frequently wash our hands, because we know that's what it takes to be safe. Guys, we go shopping, we pump gas, guys, we take our kids to recreational activities. We are around people, so what do we need to do? Practice the three Ws. Wash your hands, wear your mask, and watch your distance. I want everybody to remember that students, parents, teachers, staff, board members, please remember the three Ws, because that will help us internalize our safety expectations. Wash your hands, wear your mask, and watch your distance. Guys, we're excited, tomorrow, our soft opening, we welcome our freshmen for our annual freshman orientation, which begins at nine o'clock. Freshmen and parents, please make sure you read the email, or lock, or go to our website to see all the information about freshman orientation. Teachers will report this week for work for our annual institute days coming up this Thursday, August 13, and Friday, August 14. Teachers will be updated on safety protocols, education expectation for both online and in-person learning, and teachers will be given plenty of time to plan, because I am a strong believer, as an administrator, of the principle of reciprocity. Whatever we ask our teachers to do, we have to give them the time and the resources, so they can do it well. Student orientations, welcome week begins next Monday, August 17. Monday, the 17th, is for freshmen, Tuesday, the 18th, for sophomores, Wednesday, the 19th, for juniors, and Thursday, the 20th, for seniors, and Friday, the 21st, will be a teacher planning day. Our first day of school under the hybrid model will be on Monday, August 24, which will also be the first day of Apex Learning for those families that chose that option. This is a census year, census 2020, please complete your census. For more information, visit our website, and here are some updated percentage rates of completion. Brookfield is at 78.7%, Riverside 80.8%, North Riverside 75.5%, Broadview 71.5%, and La Grange Park at 79.1%. I ask that everyone that lives in our district, guys, the goal should be 100, because if not, we're leaving resources on the table, please complete your census. The resident port, the residency portal is still open. Currently, 251 students have not completed the entire residency process. We ask our parents and guardians to please visit the following website, www verifi.rbhst28.net, to upload the residency documents. Once that occurs, parents will receive a confirmation email for an in-person appointment to finalize the process. Athletics have begun. The six fall sports for the 2020-2021 school year have officially begun to practice under limited circumstances. For more information, please visit our website, contact the coach, or AP of Athletics, Mr. Brendan Curtin. As stated earlier, activities, the Board of Education and the union are working to finalize an agreement, but students, we are advocating for you all, we know your activities are meaningful, and we will get this right, we just need to make sure we finalize the agreement, so everyone is clear on the expectations. And lastly, I just wanted to add, as an admin team, as administrators, I hope that all the board member, parents, and students understand that we are open to change, we are open to feedback. Any plan we have is open for criticism and constructive feedback, so we will make sure that we take whatever you say seriously to improve, because if you show us data, if you have some heartfelt comments about what is best for us, guys, we will take it into consideration, because that's our job. Our job as leaders is to hear everyone out, look at the data, and develop our plan or modify our plan. So we are open for change, and I'm glad the Board said to please be open and reflect if we were on our plans after the first quarter, we will promise to commit to that. Also, to all the teachers, we have given you time and all the schedules to make sure you plan effectively. I know we're asking a lot for all of you, revise the curriculum, right? Coming to school even though there's fear, but we sharing this fear together, safety is our number-one priority, and we really hope that in the plan you see, that we're giving you time to, to update the curriculum, to give feedback to students, and to have time to be a quality educator. And that is my principal's report.
Any questions for Dr. Freitas? Thank you, Dr. Freitas, if you want to step out, you can, I know you have to be back early tomorrow morning. FOIA request, Board of Education, we have one FOIA request asking for a copy of the contract in regards to service agreement for waste and recycling services, that contract was provided. Mission statement, this is something we said we will move to another agenda, is that correct, President Smithing?
Yep.
Additional discussion items, I'm sorry.
Yeah, additional discussion items, at this point in the meeting, Board of Education members can request to add additional discussion items. All right, by last? Okay. I don't have president's report, just superintendent's report.
Curriculum Advisory Council met last week on graduation requirements, PE waiver, and class, uh, class rank. We will address those at the September meeting due to the length of today's meeting. In regards to facility, the roof is completed, we're just doing the punch list items and a few items that need to be completed. Finance Advisory Council met Monday. Finance Advisory Council, we met Monday to discuss the tentative budget and the growing deficit, we'll touch on that a little bit tonight, and Policy Advisory Council, I still need to meet with you on 104 and 105. Purchase or lease of land, you saw that there was a article today in The Landmark, we're still working with the Forest Reserve, I did get an email from the zoo today, we're coordinating another meeting. And then Liability Insurance Advisory Council, Kristen will provide an update on that later in the agenda. Lane just whispered in my ear that it was probably a good idea to allow the students to give their student report, and then allow them to leave, so that they're not violating any curfew. And Lane, would you be okay walking them out of their cars as soon as they're? Okay. So Michael and Lily, this is your first student advisory report, it's been an eventful evening, I'm sorry it took so long to get to you. But here's an opportunity for you to address the Board.
Okay. Over the past couple of months, Michael and I have the opportunity to work with the COVID-19 Transition Committee, and we're, us and the rest of the steward body, most of the steward body, is very excited to get back to school in the next couple of weeks, and we really value the in-person learning and the effort put forth together to see our teachers and our classmates, because we've really been deprived of that over quarantine. And I think especially with athletics starting to run back up again, oh, is the microphone working? Oh, okay. With athletics starting to run up again, I had tennis camp, and I know a bunch of other camps have been running, and I actually started my season, and I know that a lot of students really value their extracurriculars, because school academics is obviously the main part, but then it goes beyond that into your extracurriculars, what you do with your time, and seeing your friends, seeing your teachers, those connections, and just doing what you enjoy outside of just schoolwork and learning. So it's really great that things are starting back up again, and that we will get some in-person learning.
I also just wanted to mention that regarding class rank, since we're not going to go over that today, that we spoke with Dr. Freitas, and we made, and we came to the conclusion of allowing, starting it with freshmen with the plan system, and leaving us to the top 10. And I think that we made a collaborative agreement for that, and it was very constructive, and I think that's very good that we came to that conclusion.
And Michael and I will both be here tomorrow morning for freshman orientation, so we're really excited to welcome the new Bulldogs to the school.
Thank you very much, Michael and Lily, and I, we did do a little pre-training this week with the, with the two new student board advisors, and we talked about the importance of being prepared for meetings. They're going to meet with Dr. Freitas and I on every Monday before board meeting to make sure they have any questions, to talk about their student report. So thank you very much for your input and perspective tonight.
And for being on the committee.
And for being on the committee all summer.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Lane, for being here tonight. Mr. Lane can walk you guys out, okay, Lily and Michael?
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent's report?
Good evening, my reports begin on Board Book Page 39, and tonight I'll provide the Board of Education with financial information for July 2020. On Board Book Page 40 begins the monthly summary report. The total operating revenue for the month was $3,286,636, with 94% coming from property tax and CPPRT, and 4% coming from federal reimbursements, and 2% coming from student fees, primarily summer camps. The total operating expenditures for the month were $3,621,035, with 39% towards salary and benefits, and normally this is somewhere around 75%. The reason it's so skewed is because 36% of the expenditures this month went towards operations and maintenance, primarily Airmark's contract. We pay that contract up in, at the beginning of each fiscal year in order to receive a discount, and that was over a million dollars, which is why the percentages are so skewed this month. As well as 15% towards purchase services, which goes primarily at this point to LADZI, which is our special education cooperative. We pay that, a big chunk of it now, and then we'll pay another chunk once we get our IDEA grant approved, we put funds towards LADZI out of our IDEA grant, and then again in June, but this is the primary chunk of that money. If you go to Board Book Page 42, these are the monthly financial statements. This one is a summary of revenues, which shows that the district has received 13% of our revenue compared to what is budgeted for this year. This amount is lower than last fiscal year at this time, which was 16%. It's also a little concerning, because we, given COVID-19, are conservative in our, our revenue budget. You know, we have only budgeted 97% for our property tax collection rate, which I'll go into more detail on the budget, but, so it is significantly lower than last year. Also, if you go to Board Book Page 43, the next page, you'll see the summary of expenditures shows in the month of July, the district has spent 13% of the budgeted expenditures. This is lower, at this time last year, it was 16%, so at least, you know, we're tracking similar with the same amount of percentages for revenue and expenditures. Then, as always, on Board Book Page 44, this is just for your information, it's the statement of revenue and expenditures for the month. Following that report is the student activity account summary, there's not a whole lot of activity this past month. And then on Board Book Page 58 is the paid building rental report for fourth quarter fiscal year 20. And I know this may be a little surprising, since we didn't have any building rentals fourth quarter, but we worked over fourth quarter to bring in the revenue from rental groups that had rented during first, second, or third quarter that hadn't paid their bills. So that's really what this is. And it's primarily for the pool, and then also some miscellaneous rentals in the field house as well. So the year-to-date revenues were, for rentals, were $82,203, and the expenditures were $21,992, resulting in a surplus of $60,211.25. This surplus was a little higher than last fiscal year, and this surplus resides in the operations and maintenance account, because that's used to upkeep all of the facilities and to maintain them. So we, while we say it's a surplus, it's really, you know, poured back into the facilities to make sure that our facilities continue to look as great as they, they do, and with renting them out, there's some wear and tear, so that, that surplus is important to us. And that concludes my report for tonight.
All right. Consent agenda. Approval of minutes.
The Board of Education, County High School, District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items, approves the minutes from the meetings held on July 14, 2020, open and closed as presented in the August 11, 2020 Board Agenda Packet. Second, let me make a second.
Second.
Ms. Sierra?
Sierra, this is it, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Guys have it.
All business.
Life safety items, capital improvements, no updates, Kristen, I'm correct, the roof is done, and we're working through punch list?
Correct.
Draft agreement for engineering services, no update. Class rank, PE waivers, graduation requirement, we would move to the next meeting. Liability insurance, Kristen?
The Superintendent's Sub Advisory Council met in July, and we have narrowed down the district's options to skip, which is a cooperative, as well as a alliance, and so we have requested quote estimates from each organization for the Sub Advisory Council to review, and then we plan to bring a formal recommendation to the Board, either in September or October, if more time is needed. We're hopeful that we'll get the quotes by the end of this month, but we're not sure that will give us enough time in order to turn around a recommendation.
Now, I want to thank Kristen for all of the work that she's done in looking out to different vendors, different providers, and providing that, you know, those names and that info to the Board, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and I appreciate your expertise and all of your hard work on the, on the Sub Advisory Council as well.
Thank you, and I kick this off to the rest of the Board, any questions that you may have, wide open. You know, whatever to get your comfort level, spend as much time as needed with anybody. As we get closer to the, having the quotes and having, you know, the comparisons, and, you know, what does this mean, what, you know, what do we need, what don't we need? So, wide open, so.
We'll move to tentative budget? Oh, boy.
Kristen, you want to just highlight the changes?
Yes, so several changes have been made since you last saw the budget to reflect the current planning for the 20, 2020-21 school year due to the expected impact of COVID. You know, as this goes on, we'll get no more each month, and we can kind of give you a better picture of where we're going to be in regards to the budget. We also met, the Superintendent's Finance Advisory Council also met on Monday to discuss some of these changes. So some of the significant changes on the revenue side include a decrease of $87,000 for food service commission. Some of these things right now are representing worst-case scenario. You know, I don't envision us bringing in any revenue from Quest for our food sales or the satellites, because if we're offering this hybrid model, certainly students can grab-and-go lunch, but I don't anticipate students that are not on free and reduced lunch wanting to on a regular basis, stopping by the cafeteria to pick up and pay for a bagged lunch. They're certainly welcome to do so, I just don't anticipate that happening. So that's why that decreases there. We've decreased by $210,000 on the revenue side for services provided to other districts. This is a pass-through account for food service. Our satellite schools are going to be paying less, because they have a higher population, and they're on, some schools are on the national school lunch program, and so their bills are going to be less, so this is offset by an expenditure account. Increase of $75,000 in revenue for summer programs due to not only camps that we held late July this year, but then this is also kind of a timing issue, we'll collect, assuming we run camps We'll collect, assuming we run camps next summer, we collect a lot of that money in May and early June, and so it will hit this budget. Some of that is going to be offset, you'll see, on the expenditure side in this area as well. I eliminated paid-up-participate fees for athletics and activities. This was done, sorry, this revenue was $198,000, and this was due because this was right before IHSA had come out with their decision. So this is something that I think we could add some of that money back. Our advisory council had talked about some plans in regards to how we want this to look or things we want to explore in this regard moving forward. And then also on the revenue side, we decreased age group gymnastics revenue, but that is also offset by expenditures, and then decreased rental revenue by $80,000 as well. I don't anticipate having rental groups coming through at least the first semester. On the expenditure side, medical and dental insurance was increased due to actual staffing. We went through person by person to give us an actual cost on that, and so that went up significantly, about 11% from last year, given not only the increases, but, you know, the staff that has chosen medical and dental insurance. And it's important to note that our staffing costs have only increased by 1.58% because we've had three retirements. So that's where there's a discrepancy there. On the expenditure side, I also increased special education tuition due to not only our actuals this year, but then our projected student costs this coming year. So that was increased by $310,000. And then increasing operations and maintenance budget to buy supplies for COVID-19, not only supplies for the classroom and cleaning supplies, but also things like temperature kiosks. So that was increased by $35,000. So right now, this results in a $1.78 million deficit for this school year. We are scheduled to have a budget hearing at the next board meeting on September 8. And at that time, I'll have refined the budget to, you know, update some things. We'll have an estimate on CPPRT and some other things that we can try to really hone in and make the budget as best as we can, given, you know, the changing financial situation. So we'll certainly present that to the board at the next board meeting.
So, and I know we're obligated and we want to take care of all the kids. It's something I keep, I keep talking about, that special education keeps going up and up and up. $300,000, that's like the price of three teachers. We don't see that going down.
No, so we were, you know, I budgeted like 1.54 million dollars this year, and, you know, that we, I think our actual was 1.68 because we had some additional students. We had one student that was already attending RB that we outplaced, and then we had two transfer students come in. So that's why we missed the budget on that. And then this coming fiscal year, we have five new students coming in that are outplaced, and we did have five seniors that exited. Some of our freshmen coming in, though, have some more expensive placements and some higher needs. And then in addition, we've had, we will have another student that was placed in a day program and needs to move to a residential program. And so that is some additional cost. We will see a little bit of savings. We've been working with LADZI to create a program for OSNLT. So we will see a little bit of savings for that, not only on the tuition side, but as well as the transportation side. And hopefully those savings continue to grow as that program continues to grow. I think this year, we only have four or five students that are taking advantage of that and that that program is a good fit for them. So hopefully, you know, that continues to grow, and that can be a little bit of a cost savings for us in that area.
So we, are you done? Quick question. We heard in Hector's report that there were 250, give or take, students yet to register for this year. Is that on course with prior years in terms of delayed registration? Or do we think our enrollment numbers are going to be significantly impacted by COVID or something else?
It is definitely higher than past years. But typically, what normally happens at this time every year, there usually is anywhere from like, probably, it's probably around 150. We start making individual phone calls, and a lot of those families will come in. And then roughly, you know, on any normal year, we would have 30 families out of that group that just say, you know, oh, no, I forgot to tell you, I moved out of state, or I moved district, so I'm not coming back, things of that nature. So that number is high. I know they're working on it, but that is a, that is a possibility that, you know, parents choose to homeschool their student or not send them this year.
I, I wonder if it will go up after tonight's vote, right? Like, I wonder if some people were just waiting to see, even though we've overcommunicated and stuff, I think some people were maybe waiting to see what would actually happen.
Right. What to expect for the school year?
Right.
That's possible.
Further questions for Kristen? It's a lot to swallow.
No, I, I don't, I just would like to make another statement of revenues continue to decrease, expenditures continue to increase, right? Like, we see right here, there's, that's over a half a million dollars in lost revenue and over $600,000 in increased expenditures, right? So, it's rough, right? We have to manage the money and, and try to do more with less and, or the same with less, and...
Well, and right here, you've got 400 and, you know, $500,000 out of our control factor.
Right.
Special education's not in our control factor. And medical and dental insurance, which is not really, I mean, that's the benefit. That's why we, that's a positive thing, right? So, but it's $500,000 more than we spent last year. And we have to be conscious that going forward, back to, I mean, I think right now, we're really happy we have our rainy day fund, right? Because, you know, we need to make...
We are in the middle of the ultimate rainy day.
Yeah, and we're, we're spending the money we need to spend, so, but it won't last All right.
Board policies can be moved to the next agenda.
Yes.
We already passed the COVID-19 Plan 70 on hybrid and remote if needed. Press Plus policy issue 104, and they just sent a new one, 105. They're both very small. Laura and Gina will work with you to get, to get that done before the September meeting. New business? First, into payment of bills?
No questions, we're submitted.
No questions, we're submitted.
Okay, I'll read the resolution. Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented in the August 11, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Mary Ann?
Deanna?
Mrs. Zales?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Zales?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Roska?
Yes.
Activity account for class of 2024 to start freshman class. This is just a formality that the board approved, an activity account for them so that if they fundraise any dollars, they have an established activity account.
Sure. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the activity account for the class of 2024 as presented in the August 11, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Jacob seconded. Mary Ann?
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Zales?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Roska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Snicker?
Yes. Quest memorandum of understanding?
First read, Kristen. Just want to bring them up to speed real quick.
Sure. On Friday, I met with the President of Quest and our Regional Manager to discuss a proposed MOU for the 2020-21 school year. The MOU consists of a new cost structure, given that little or no revenue will be generated this fiscal year. So Quest is proposing a cost structure because they're forecasting an operational loss for this fiscal year under the existing contract agreement, and they don't, they're a small company, and so they don't anticipate being able to survive that, that loss if they don't do something different. So the initial proposed cost structure was a $5,000 a month fee. And after meeting with Quest on Friday, the district, I was able to negotiate that fee going down to $3,000 a month so that that's more in line with the size of our district and the typical volume that we do in our past sales numbers. This is a cost increase. We typically don't have this fee because they typically receive our revenue, and they use that revenue to then pay their overhead, their overhead costs, and they don't have that revenue, and they don't believe they can survive as a company without this. So they are charging, they are looking to do a fee with every single school that is not on the National School Lunch Program. I do know a lot of the other schools that they are working with are larger, and so their fees are $10,000 a month. So again, this is a first read. I have also sent it to legal counsel for review, but I wanted to propose this to the board now so that you could have a chance to look it over and ask any questions that you may have.
But this is definitely something we need because they provide the free and reduced lunch, the grab and go lunches.
Oh, absolutely.
We don't charge those students, so that was money we were just paying out of pocket for them to make those lunches, but this is more for like the management fee of it?
Yes, correct. So we still, we would still need to pay for the free lunches as well as the reduced lunches. They're also working with some legislators to try to expand this rebate program to give us some money for basically, to get some reimbursement for schools that are not on the National School Lunch Program. But yes, in, in the fourth quarter, they did whatever we asked them to do to make sure all of our students were given a lunch, no questions asked. They didn't charge us for anything other than the food and the actual labor it cost to make those lunches, and then they ate the overhead cost and the management cost because they had gotten revenue earlier in the year, and so they were able to sustain that for that, for that one quarter. They don't believe that they're able to do that this fiscal year. I will say, they've been great to work with. I've met with them on several occasions. They will do whatever the building administration and I deem necessary. You know, we've thrown several different plans out there, and they, they're working with us to make sure they're meeting the needs of our students, which is how we came up with the plan of providing two lunches on Tuesday or Wednesday and two breakfasts to grab and go. And then on Thursday and Friday, students on free and reduced lunch would be able to grab three breakfasts and three lunches. And we've talked about making sure the menus are different and that food, you know, is something that can be sustained for three days. And so they've been a really great partner, and I would, I would really like to see that continue if possible.
So, so what happens if we don't agree? I, you sound like you have very, very strong, positive words for them, but what if we don't agree to the MOU? What would be our next step?
We would have to go back with them and I think negotiate something else. They understand that this, I made it very clear that that could be a possibility, but that also this is not something that is going to be done overnight, and that, you know, like it could take a couple of board meetings to get to a place where we, we approved whatever it was. And they understood that, and they said they were committed to continuing to provide service in the meantime until we figured it out. And, you know, they expressed that they were confident in doing that, too. So I would imagine there would need to be some sort of agreement. You know, I'm happy to go back to them and, and talk about, you know, changes that the board would like to see. I know I did hear back from legal counsel, and they have some changes to the MOU as well. I haven't looked at those yet, but, so I do anticipate some changes.
Kristen, are we prepared? Like, I understand they're doing this management fee, but that we better, we do have a backup plan, and we should probably just be safe. And we have very good relationship with Quest, they're very accommodating, but God forbid if something happened to their business or they had to go out, out of business or something, we need to make sure we have a service to provide lunch.
We do. I, I have a backup plan that I could implement should something happen with Quest, or, for example, we get at a standstill and, you know, can't work something out for this year. I do have a backup plan that I think would be able to come in and still provide service for our students.
And I believe their, our feeder schools are relying on them as well.
Correct. So Quest is still providing service to our satellite schools.
Are they negotiating a management fee for the feeder schools as well?
I don't believe so because they are on the National School Lunch Program, and so this is for the schools that are not on the National School Lunch Program.
Part of the work for the management fee we're negotiating to cover that satellite program, and if so, is there an ability to split some of that cost with each district, even if it's a small amount?
I can certainly, I can certainly look into that.
All right, thank you.
Interesting idea, yeah.
Is there no relief for, because with all the schools closed, all the lunch providers have to be in the same boat. Is there no, like, relief coming?
I'm assuming they probably got through that already through the summer or through most of last year.
Well, isn't the difference in the designation, the fact that we're not on the National School Lunch Program?
Yes.
Right.
So that's where the crux is.
No, I think Laura's suggesting that we're eligible for PPP dollars or something.
Some kind of federal relief?
Yeah.
Federal or state from the, you know, state ground, well, because the schools are run by the state, so I would expect...
I'm sure they've checked on it, but...
Quest, Quest is working with, Quest is working at the state level to lobby for getting some reimbursement for schools that are not on the School Lunch Program. I don't know if that's going to happen or when that will happen. I don't anticipate being a lot of money either, but I mean, certainly any, we'll take any money we can get. So I do know Quest is pushing very hard for that because I think they have about 25 schools that are not on the National School Lunch Program that are in the same situation that we're in.
Okay. Everybody else good? Any other questions?
Matters for closed? Okay, matters for closed. Personnel, sale, lease of property, collective negotiations, school safety, visitor statements, and out. Discussion items, any requested? No? Consideration items for future meetings? Right, no? Then closed session.
Okay, closed session. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Second?
Second.
Mary Ann?
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Zales?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Roska?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.